Roll call, please, Weston.
Yes, Mayor, let's do roll call for Planning Commission. Chair Quilisi?
Here.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Commissioner Trent? Commissioner Murphy?
Here.
Commissioner Bennett?
He's on his way in from Santa Barbara.
Okay.
Said he might be late.
And Commissioner Starkweather?
Here.
Councilmembers, Mayor Sticks?
Here.
Councilmember Rule?
Here.
Councilmember Lang?
Here.
Virtual.
Virtual.
Correct. Councilmember Whitman?
Here.
Mayor Protem Francina?
Here.
Thank you, Weston, and I'm going to read something about Councilmember Lang being virtual. Hi, Rachel. Good evening. The Brown Act authorizes members of the city council to participate in meetings remotely under certain conditions. Assembly Bill 2449, which was signed into law by Governor Newsom on September 13th, 2022, and is effective January 1st, 2023, permits council members to participate in city council meetings remotely when they can demonstrate just cause or emergency circumstances and when a quorum of the city council is physically present in the city. Councilmember Lang is participating in tonight's meeting remotely under AB 2449. Councilmember Lang is participating under the emergency circumstances exception, given a contagious illness. Councilmember Lang will be participating in tonight's meeting using audiovisual technology, per AB 2449. A council member participating remotely due to emergency circumstances requires council consent. I'll ask if there's any opposition to this request? Anyone? Okay. Seeing none, we will proceed. Councilmembers participating remotely under AB 2449 are required to disclose at the start of the meeting whether any other individuals 18 years of age or older are present in the room at the remote location with the council member and the council member's relationship with the individual. Councilmember Lang, would you please confirm that you are the only person 18 years or older in the room you're teleconferencing from or else disclose those persons over 18 present with you?
I'm the only one here.
Okay, thank you. As required by AB 2449, all votes taken tonight will be done by roll call. Thank you. James, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you, and the flag for everybody is right behind the mayor in the front of the room. Please join me standing, right hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the people who stand as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, James. And is there an approval of the agenda, motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
In a second? A second? Okay, roll call, please, Weston?
Yes. Councilmember Whitman? Is that a yes or a no?
Yes or no?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Lang?
Yes.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Councilmember Rule?
Yes.
Will we be doing a Planning Commission vote?
All right, thank you, Weston. We will move on to public comment. Are there any public comments? And just a reminder that tonight's public comments are on the item that is on the discussion agenda. Oh, we have one. We will begin with Drew Mashburn.
Good evening, I'm Drew Mashburn. I've resided in the Ojai Valley nearly 72 years next month. My family's been here since the early 1920s. When this 25-year plan goes ahead and expires, I'll be about 96 years old, hope to still be here, may not be. You know, I admire any persons that step up into government and fill the various positions, councils, planning commissions. Or chief, anybody. At the last... Yeah, this is, you know, I looked at this whole package, it's like 100 pages long. It's overwhelming. It's a lot of information for the public to digest and discuss among themselves. And I'm looking at a new vote tonight if we're taking a vote on anything this substantial for our future. The public needs more of a chance to weigh in on this. I'm a retired guy. I retired almost eight years ago, and I can't have been able to keep up on it. At the last council meeting, I believe Councilman Whitman seemed to be moving towards having each present council member select a planning commissioner of his or her choice. I agree. I don't believe that all the present council members hold the same sentiments about this issue as the previous council. I'd like to see a planning commission that reflects each council member's likes and dislikes. This would lend to a better balanced planning commission for expressing their advice to this extremely, extremely, I cannot express it enough how important this is. And it's going to go ahead and not just affect us right now, it's going to affect future generations. Please keep that in mind when you make your decisions tonight.
Thank you, Drew. Next, we have Bill Miley, then Brian Akins, and then Wayne Maynard.
This is the general plan, so. I'm confused. I want to speak on the general plan.
Yes, that's correct, Bill.
But I want to hear it first.
Well, we're taking public comment first, and then we're going to, we'll have the presentation.
May I ask a question, Mayor? Can the public ask questions after the presentation as well? I think that's what Bill Miley was asking.
I'm fine with that.
I'm in favor, yeah.
Okay. Good evening.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Whitman?
We move public comment until after your presentation.
Is that what you prefer, Bill? I mean, we have two other cards.
I intended to speak on the safety issues, transportation, and usually there's a presentation administratively first, people hear about it, you ask questions, and then the public speaks. That's what I came for.
Okay. Would you like to make your comment now or later? Okay, thank you. Brian Akins?
Hello, Planning Commission, council staff, our chief, and others. There were a lot of pages. I pulled it out, pulled out 19 pages that I'm focused on. They're mainly focused on the Ojai Avenue area, and I'm interested to see how housing will intertwine with a downtown historic district and whether that will be supportive of that or destructive of that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. Next, we have Wayne Maynard.
Wayne Maynard, I'm resident of Ojai. My specific interest tonight is with the safety element provisions on the general plan. The current safety element that we have was developed in 1991, and it's like 57 pages reviewing the information in the agenda item package. It appears to really only focus on wildland fire, and we have a lot more safety issues that we need to be addressed. Just look at the existing plan. We've got seismic hazards, flood hazards, geological hazards with, you know, with soils, bunch of things that are covered. And so, I don't know if you just haven't progressed that far yet, or if you're intending on leaving all that kind of stuff out. I also have a specific concern with regards to just our fire protection in the community as a whole for building fire protection, not just wildland. We have a very long time it takes to get enough firefighters into our valley to actually make a good aggressive attack on a building fire, and that needs to be addressed, I believe, on our plan as well. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Wayne. Weston, any comments on Zoom?
Yes, Mayor, we have one on Zoom, two on Zoom now. First, we'll have Renee, followed by Becky. Pardon me, everyone. James Hahn, it appears I don't have the ability to let them in. We'll just need some technical assistance. There we go. It's fixed. Renee, you have the floor?
Hi, this is Renee Roth. It's so nice to see you all together in the same room. I'm sorry I can't be there today, I've got a conflict. But, so is this the section of the meeting where we're just going to address what is on the agenda for the general plan update? Is that it?
Yes, this is a public comment for the general plan.
Okay, all right. So, hold on, let me get access to my document here, I just printed it out.
Mayor, I think we should also make sure the public understands that they can also comment after the staff report, the, you know, the presentation, just to make sure.
Yes.
Oh, okay. I have a conflict, so I would like to talk now, just briefly.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our small town has basically been relatively unchanged for the past 35 years, but we are facing new challenges as it has become increasingly popular with tourists leading to an influx of cars and traffic and dogs and shoppers. Additionally, faster alternative modes of transportation like e-bikes and e-scooters are becoming more popular. In simple terms, we must address the need for more infrastructure to support the cars and the traffic and the people who want to come to our beautiful town, including various types of housing for all sizes and income levels. However, the most significant challenge we face is the lack of affordable housing, which is worsened by a small but vocal group that opposes any new development in the hope of preserving our small-town character and access to nature. We are at a tipping point, and it is essential that we address our antiquated and aging infrastructure now, needs now, and be willing to pay for them. We must also incorporate environmental standards into the housing element to promote the most efficient use of resources. This includes adopting green building policies and regulations designed at the state level, including the use of renewable energy sources, energy-efficient building materials, and water, conservation, and fire safety standards, with design for more sustainable transportation options included in any of this new development. It looks like I'm running out of time. I just want us to work together and make this happen to improve our public services and infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee. We have one more comment in person, Kathy Lattes?
Well, okay, I admit I'm a little confused because I would actually prefer to make a comment after we hear the presentation, but, so, since we just walked in, I'm sorry, I'm a little late and I didn't quite get the...
You can do that if you prefer.
I would prefer.
Okay.
Thank you.
One more comment online?
That's correct, Mayor. Becky, you have the floor now?
Thank you, Weston. Yes, I'm speaking off the, this is Becky Windinwood again tonight, and I'm speaking off the cuff because I really had a hard time grasping all of the material that I found in those 100 pages. But I do have a couple of things I'd like to ask of the councils and the others assembled tonight particularly. We have a government, we're supposed to have, a government of the people, by the people, and for the people, and that means that the people's voices must be heard. And as Drew Mashburn pointed out earlier, this is an awful lot of information for people to digest in a very short period of time and to line up with all the different stresses and challenges that we're having in our community now as opposed to when this original general plan may have been created. I want to say in response to the idea that those who want to preserve Ojai, its environment, its charm, its hometown atmosphere, its affordability, and so on and so forth, are not anti-housing. That is a misnomer that has been too often used to divide our community, and that is simply not the case. Most of us who want to preserve Ojai, want to preserve Ojai for the locals as opposed to always pandering to tourists and those who want to come here who end up pricing everybody else out of town, and then we lose the fabric of our community. So, what I want to ask of you all tonight is to consider the people who already live here and what they would like to see in their town. It looks as though there was some kind of a survey that was done. I noticed that there was something about three out of five respondents agreed with this or something like that. I don't know how those respondents were chosen if all voters in the city of Ojai received a questionnaire that they could respond to, and that might be something you can go into in your presentation tonight. But I just want to make sure that everybody understands that those who want to preserve Ojai are not anti-housing, but we are more focused on the locals who already live here and would prefer not to expand our population because it is simply unsustainable. We live in a small valley with limited resources, and we must attend to the truth of limitation and not our hubris. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. That's it, Weston?
No more via Zoom, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. All right, we will move on to our one discussion item, general plan update. Joint meeting with the city council and planning commission for city council determine, with input from planning commission, preferred alternatives to the land use element, transportation element, and safety element. And before we introduce our consultants, I did talk to Councilmember Lang earlier this afternoon. We were reviewing the general plan, so I believe Councilmember Lang, you have a motion?
Yes, I actually wanted to, I wanted to hear what the developer, or what the presentation, but I am in alignment with what Becky and Drew shared, that I feel, I feel like it would be helpful to workshop this, to get more community involvement. Actually, Bill Miley in the public comments that he emailed mentioned that there were 160 people participating in the surveys and workshops, and that represents such a small fraction, and a disproportionate number of those people were older residents. And, and so, my, my motion is that we, that we actually have another workshop on this, and we involve community members, and we get more input. So, to give this more time, that we don't adopt this right, right away.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion, is there a second, and then council, we can discuss?
Yeah, I'll say.
Okay. Any comments from council?
If I could add one more piece to this, too? If, if, is it okay to add one more? So, the other thing that I noticed is a glaring, there are a couple of pieces that are missing, and one is a climate. There's, there's nothing about climate in here, and a lot of the, the data was collected before really the, we, like, this was March 20, March 2020 was when the housing research was collected, and this is before COVID. I, I just feel like, I feel like there are some missing pieces that would be really helpful to include as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Lang. All right, we have a motion in a second. Go ahead, Susa.
Could our city manager just briefly refresh us? Because my recollection is that we've had so many meetings. And I, I mean, I would consider if we need another one, but I, I just have a long memory of multiple meetings.
Yeah, we have, it was, it's actually part of the introduction, so I might end up repeating it, but we were going to remind everybody because we know that there's been a lot going on over the last three years, a lot more probably pressing items for people trying to, you know, get their kids to school and, and survive the last few years. And so, we were going to start with sort of a refresher of how we got to this point, starting with the, you know, the, it's almost become legend, but the fact that we kicked off the general plan update the day that the COVID emergency was declared and we had to cancel the first meeting off the bat. So, going back to that point, we've had several attempts to get community input, stakeholder meetings, council meetings, planning commission meetings. We did a program where we tried to have, and I had actually forgot about this until earlier today, we tried to have high school students from Nordoff participate in a, in a, I think it was a survey that we did with them. We did a community survey with 200 community members who responded, and then to the question from the member of the public about, you know, how we chose people, we actually had a series of workshops that were just open meetings, so people could choose to attend or not. We didn't exclude anybody. And one of the visioning workshops had over 100 community members in March of 2021, which admittedly was quite a while ago. And then in August of 2020, or December of 2021, we had the last sort of PC city council. Well, we had an item that came to planning commission and then came to council to discuss vision and guiding principles and had a lot of public input at those meetings. And then in August of 2022, we had a community workshop on policy options related to land use policy, transportation, and safety that had 150 community members. And as part of the introduction, we were going to just refresh everybody's memories that that workshop with those 150 people, and that feedback is what led to tonight's, the analysis that we did in tonight's item. So, we've had a series, I think it's fair, and we would be the first to admit that we weren't planning for this to go on three-plus years, and so it's also fair to say that, you know, it's been a long process, but we've had several meetings over the last three years.
Was your intention with this motion that we take a vote at the beginning of the meeting? Because I would not be comfortable to do that. I would consider, you know, revisiting that at the end of the staff report and the presentation. I don't know how everybody else feels, but I'm not prepared to vote for anything at this point.
I understood that to be her motion, and that's what I supported, is that we'd hear the staff report and that we'd hold discussion. But as far as voting on
Okay.
direction, we'd make a further effort, we can talk about, to get more public input? It was my thinking, if the motion was intended to get more participation by the public. And I'm perfectly fine with us going forward with the meeting
Okay.
up to the point of voting on actual
Okay.
policy direction.
I just wanted to be clear. Thank you.
So, to be clear, you're proposing voting after the presentation?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
After discussion?
After discussion.
Yes, and after public comments as well.
Okay, all right, Leslie?
If you could, at some point, try to tally up the numbers, the hours, because as true as this may be, people come or they don't, and I've heard about this numerous times. So, I don't know how we would change or get more people to come. We certainly could try. So, I'm certainly, I'm just curious, like, the numbers, how many workshops have we actually had? What were the topics of those workshops? How many people, you know, showed up? And I would be the first to agree that the demographics probably, you know, are highly representative of one particular demographic, you know? But I think it'd be also good to have those numbers.
I call that the interest of demographic.
I would say, you know, yeah, but I'm also, you know, outreach is outreach, and, you know, like, I think it's wonderful that we, that we attempted to get some Nordoff seniors in. Did they come?
Yeah, and I just was getting an update on that.
Yeah, you can tally later.
We got about 10 responses from, we tried to work with the high school group, and we got about 10 people, 10 kids who actually filled it out. And I think roughly, we're talking 450 to 500 participants, but obviously disclaimer, like, could be some of the same people showing up multiple times, so.
Okay. Yeah, and I have no objection to revisiting that motion after the presentation, and if we could also think about what the next steps would be if we were to postpone and not go back to the drawing board, but potentially, you know, extend the outreach. What would that look like? Or are we asking staff to envision that for us as well? So, thank you.
Could I make a comment?
Sure, can we just wrap this up in one second?
What was about this?
Okay, sure, good.
I looked at the demographics of the last survey, and obviously, the people over 65 was greatly disproportionate, the population, and it's not surprising who comes out to things. It seemed to me that the one way you could get a better, true demographic look would be to do focus groups, where you pick people by demographics, and you had several of those that gives people information in advance so they understand what they're giving an opinion on, and you can get more in-depth feedback. That would be my only suggestion if we're going on, but probably doing more public workshops, we're going to get the same people coming back out again, I suspect.
Thank you. Okay, so just, so just a reminder about the sequence, we will have the presentation from Ramen Associates, and then on the three different sections, right? We will discuss after each section, correct, James?
Yeah, that's, that's what I want to make sure I understand, just with, trying to understand the motion. So, I think maybe why that motion was made is that the, sort of the plan right now is that we'd have a presentation from our consultant, Ramen Associates, and then they were going to focus on the three main areas and ask for feedback and direction. So, I think what I, what I heard was that we start with just the presentation and not have that feedback and direction portion yet, and then at the end decide what we want to do?
Okay, that sounds reasonable. So, go through all three sections?
So, we'll just, we'll just go through the presentation, and I think Ron's on the Zoom, so I'll say it now, and then we'll repeat when, when we know he's hearing us, but I think the idea would be, we'll just, we'll go through the presentation and then decide where we're going from there.
And there are about 80 slides, so we'll all sit back and, got the popcorn.
Yeah. Coffee.
Okay, well, it's my pleasure to introduce Ron Whitmore and Ramen Associates team to prevent the general plan update. Thank you so much, Ron and team, for all your hard work on this, much appreciated.
And if I may just give a quick introduction before we do that, I just wanted, I think we sort of have said a lot of what I had planned to say, but I sort of just wanted to remind everybody about what the general plan update is and the fact that it's one of the most important things we can do because it's the guiding document for the city 25 years plus into the future. It's essentially the council and the planning commission and the community participating through workshops, working together to set the course for the, for the city. Essentially, as we move into the future, every decision that we make should be reinforced by the general plan or should reinforce the general plan. It's a major project, an ambitious project. Most cities, when we had, when we were getting consultants and we were doing comparisons, most cities in the county spend over $1 million on a general plan update. We were fortunate that we were able to, to get a bid for much less, but it's, it's a big project, it's a large-scale project. And as I said, we are now three years and I think a month into ours. We had planned to have it done quicker than that, but many of the impacts we mentioned earlier, such as the pandemic, really impacted this. I think I've said this in meetings before, but one of the jokes that we've said is, the first meeting we ever had, I told them, "Ojai would never, ever have a virtual meeting, so don't ever bring it up." And then by the next month, we were told you can only have virtual meetings, so, so we had to change our strategy. So um so we had to change our strategies and we had, you know, plans to come in person and those moved to virtual and then, you know, all these different things. So it it's been a long process. Uh, for that reason, we have uh Ron's gonna um give a presentation uh that was mentioned a moment ago as I think our estimate was eighty slides. And part of the reason we're doing that is trying to sort of make sure everybody has the same um base of found uh foundation uh in the information, how we got to this point, um where we're at, what decisions have been made to this point. Uh, we've adopted our guiding principles, our vision statement. We've um had the visioning workshops and we've also had community workshops on the land use element, transportation element, safety element policies, which have gotten us to this point. And uh Ron will go over that a little bit more. Uh, uh, but um kind of, he's gonna get into a a lot of detail. And so I will end it with just reminding everybody to s- to try to think kind of high-level, big picture. Uh, three areas that have come up nonstop in the workshops we had, where there is just so many different ideas about what they what could happen in these areas, what could be done in these areas, is Bryant Street and Bryant Circle, um Ojai Avenue and and whether um uh there's areas there where there could be some interesting live-work type of um arrangements. And Montgomery Street and how businesses and residences can interact on Montgomery Street. And those three have come up every workshop we had, uh they would come up. We did one where we broke into really small groups and and each small group was digging into those three or, you know, those three topics kept coming up. So we will get very detailed, but I would encourage everybody to just sort of think, remember to also think big picture. We're talking about over the next twenty-five years, what do we wanna see in those areas and in the city as a whole? So um with that, I will turn it over to uh uh Ron uh to um.
James, can I just uh?
Sure.
Commissioner Erp, I'm sorry, um Chair Quillacy has a question.
Uh, yes, um, I noticed in the staff report, it it mentions land use element, which I think we're kind of past at this point. We've gone back and forth with HCD a couple times.
That's the housing element. So that's our housing agenda.
Land use, circulation and safety, but also listed as environmental justice. I I understand that this is a required element of the general plan now, but it is not going to be a separate element. Rather, it's going to be infused into all of the other elements, specifically the three that we're talking about tonight. And as I read this eighty-six-page briefing, I didn't see any of that. So I'm hoping that that Ron can let us uh understand how environmental justice is being woven into each of these three elements now, which is what I'm told it's supposed to be happening.
Yeah, and I would say the so the list you're referring to, the bullet point list, is the list of all items we plan to include in our update.
Right.
The list of items, which is just the three land use element, transportation element and safety element, are the three that are the focus tonight.
So we're not going to discuss environmental justice at all tonight.
Uh, not not except only if it comes up in relation to one of those three pieces. So it it will not be the focus of tonight. And so with that, I'll ask Ron. Ron is uh just for everybody, he's attending um virtually. He is, he will be on the screen, uh the screens on either side. But Ron, um, can you take it away?
Uh, yes, good evening. Thank you, James. Um, thank you, Mayor Sticks, council members, commissioners. Um, is the audio and video working okay on your end?
Yes, it's working. And Ron, in case you didn't hear coming in, um, so the idea or the request from council at this point is to get through the presentation without stopping um to focus on those three key issues, get through the presentation and then come back and see how the council wants to handle it, so.
Yeah, I was I was listening in on a previous conversation. Thank you.
What what did what did he just say?
He heard us.
He heard what we were talking about.
Is that what he said?
Sort of.
More volume.
Higher volume.
Are you having trouble hearing me on your end?
Yeah, it's not very loud. We'll ask James to turn it up. Can you uh give it a shot, Ron?
Yeah, sure. Is this any better?
Yeah.
That's better.
You're very good.
All right, yeah, please don't hesitate to stop me if you're having any trouble with the audio or the video. Um, a good, again, good evening. Um, thank you all for gathering this evening. Good evening, members of the public. My name is Ron Whitmore. I'm a principal with Ramy and Associates, which is a planning firm with offices in Berkeley and Los Angeles. I'm the project manager for the Ojai General Plan Update. Um, James, if you could show the slides, I'd appreciate it, starting with um slide one, and then we'll transition quickly to the next slide. Can you put it in presentation mode, James?
James, you have to enable editing before you can do that. It's the button in the highlighting at the top. See there.
Is that what Weston's supposed to be doing right now?
I don't think so. It's Ja- James Hahn's running it from the back.
There you go.
Perfect, thank you. And you can advance to the next slide, please. So while he's advancing that slide, so with me tonight, um in addition to your excellent staff resources there and James and Lucas, who we've been working with very closely on all of this all along, I have with me here tonight Megan McNulty, who's a senior planner with Ramen Associates, who's been focusing on a lot of the land use work for the Ojai General Plan Update. And also on short notice, Sean Daly from Iteris, who is the transportation subconsultant for the project, was able to join us this evening because we heard that there were some questions about the traffic impact analysis that was done for the land use, the possible land use change option. Um, Megan and I will do the bulk of the presentation since uh Sean wasn't planning on being here originally. Uh, but he will be available to help address any questions that come up specific to any of the transportation. Slide please. So we have two main goals for tonight's meeting. One was to provide a brief status update, um knowing that there are some newer commissioners and council members who uh may not have the full background. Most importantly, we're planning on talking you through uh some of the key policy options that have come up that we thought would be helpful to get council's direct um guidance on before we proceeded with developing the plan. Um, and so the bulk of the presentation was gonna be focused on the policy options in phase three there on the agenda, transportation and safety policy options. Now, James, just to clarify, I I I we were gonna share a a very abbreviated version of the presentation. Um, not that full eighty-eight slide deck is your is the preference of the council for us to share the entire presentation?
No, I just didn't count what the abbreviated was, so.
Okay.
Continue with that. We provided the um full version in the packet as background, but just uh if you can continue with that and then if specific questions come up, we can.
Okay, excellent. Yeah, we do have that full slide deck at our disposal. Um, in addition to that, we have all of the background documentation, the reports from all the public uh engagements, outreach, all of the technical studies. And so depending on the nature of the questions, we have a lot of good resources at our fingertips that we can reference and even share on screen depending on the nature of the question.
Question, the summarized version is just just taking out stuff so that's it's we have it all. It's just we gotta skip pages. Okay.
Yes, it'll just like we hit, yeah, we hit a number of the slides. And so we'll be going in the same progression generally, just not presenting some of the slides that are in your full packet.
Okay.
Um, and again, we'll just be, the purpose tonight is to really to fo- focus on five of the options that are um noted in that full packet, the three land use changes, the complete streets approach and the direction for wildfire mitigation. Knowing there was limited time, we decided to focus on those, assuming they were the the ones of greatest interest and from which we would need the most specific guidance from city council. Um, we were gonna stop after each section, but my understanding is you'd like us just to complete the entire presentation and then stop for questions and discussion. Is that correct?
Yes.
But, yeah, we what if we change our mind after we see it? Let's let's.
Sure you can interrupt.
Susan, what, yeah, let's let's let the the uh presentation go and then we'll each take turns um.
Well, he did ask. Okay.
I I I would, I think it would be easier to stop after each section myself.
Yeah, because we forget our questions.
But I'm not sure how we got to the agreement not to
Yeah.
not to stop between each section.
Could could we do a compromise and if we're all happy to move on, but if we have questions?
After each part. Okay, and then Ron, we just let us know when each section is completed.
Yeah, there's actually a slide that tells us it's time to stop and ask if there's any questions and support any discussion, so that'll be easy.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so there there's a few different parts to the presentation. The general planner overview is very brief, as is the quick overview of phases one and two of the project. Having heard a number of related questions tonight from both the public and council and commissioners, we're happy to provide any more detailed background information about any of those, but I will be providing a very brief overview. Seeing primarily on the uh policy. Next slide, please. And you can proceed as well. So um high level, as has been noted already tonight, um, the city of Ojai has a complete general plan. Those elements and their most recent data update is listed to the right. However, this is a focused general plan update, focusing specifically on the five elements list uh listed on the left, land use, circulation, safety, environmental justice and housing. The housing element, as has been noted, was adopted um by the city council already and is in the final stages of HCD certification. Likewise, as noted earlier, um based on the environmental justice analysis done at the beginning of the planning process, the plan is to integrate environmental justice goals and policies into the other elements. Um, the land use, circulation, the safety elements specifically as appropriate. Next slide, please, James. So as um was mentioned earlier also, it's uh planning, general plan processes tend to be multi-phase and sometimes lengthy. Um, we're about in the middle of the process in phase three. Um, and that is the focus of tonight's presentation. Um, and I'll give you a quick overview of those first two phases before providing more background about the policy options. Importantly, tonight, we're really just focusing on policy direction. There will be a full set of goals, policies and actions coming in the draft general plan, which is the next phase of the project. And the current uh approach we're discussing with the city is that we come back to the city council and planning commission after there's a an administrative draft of that plan prepared, which would cover, which would be everything, all topics and all levels of detail, before it then went through extensive public review and then back to the planning commission and council for adoption. So just just so people understand, this is certainly not the last bite at the apple. It's an early bite at the apple to get some high-level direction from the city council so that we can proceed with developing the full plan. But we'll be coming back to you at a minimum of two more times. Next slide, please, James. So again, a very quick synopsis of the first two phases of the project. Phase one was focused on documenting current conditions that should inform the planning process. Ten reports were produced focused on a range of environmental, demographic, housing, economic, land use, parks, transportation and environmental justice topics. Those are all available on the city's general plan webpage, as are all other project documents. Phase two is focused on crafting a clear vision and set of guiding principles for the gen- general plan. Those were based on extensive community input, including meetings with city commissions, two community surveys and a community visioning workshop. Everything we've learned from the existing conditions analysis and that community input was summarized in a draft vision and guiding principles document, which was then reviewed by the planning commission and adopted by the city council in twenty twenty. What you see on the screen here is the vision statement. None of it, I hope, would uh be at all surprising, members of the public and commissioners and city council members. It is the the it is a description of what the community aspires to be in the future. Um, general plans are twenty-to-thirty-year plans, and so it's a vision for Ojai and roughly the year twenty forty-five. Describes a community's desire, character and conditions in that in that re- uh time era. Likewise, next slide, please, Ja- James. Um, and this is just the topics covered in the general pr- uh principles, but there were um eight guiding principles that were also adopted along with the vision. They complement the vision and establish the high-level direction needed to achieve that vision. These principles and the vision adopted by council are also on the project website. These are de- dis- designed to be foundational to the rest of the planning process. Each subsequent step in the process should should achieve the vision or work towards achieving the vision and be consistent with the guiding principle. Next slide, please, James. So as I mentioned, my overview of the general plan in phases one and two is very brief. You have more detail in your full slide deck and we're happy to address any questions you may have about them. But what I'm gonna do first is give a brief overview of the third phase of the planning process, the policy options phase, and then turn it over to Megan, who will introduce you to the first um land use policy option. We'll then pause for questions and discussion. Um, so as I noted earlier, the purpose of the policy options is to take a preliminary incremental step towards an administrative draft general plan, but without yet going into that level of detail. It's to take a moment to make sure we're very clear on the desired direction of the highest level, highest priority policy options that are being considered for the general plan. So in the case of Ojai, um, given that it's a focused update on focused on land use, transportation and safety, we focused on those three areas. Um, we're now at the point where we, the second second uh section there on the slide, where we'd like your um direction on these options. And then they become, that direction becomes the foundation of the administrative draft general plan, along with a policy review and a lot of other related research and community input that we've been gathering. The land use policy options specifically will become the foundation for any changes in the land use policy map that is fundamental to the land use element. And the transportation and safety policy direction will be reflected in the written policies of those two elements. Slide please. So to get to this point, this is a slightly more detailed explanation of how we got to where we are tonight. And you see there where we are tonight noted by the the icon. Um, back eh last year, we began working as the with the vision and the guiding principles as a foundation, as well as the previous community input. Um, we began working with city staff on developing some options. Uh, we developed some um concepts which were brought to, I believe, the planning commission and council in the spring of last year. But concurrently, we completed a full policy review of the existing general bl- general plan policies done by both the technical team and city staff. Um, and then explored in depth a variety of land use options. And through a working meeting with city staff in the middle of last year, narrowed down the options that we thought were those that should be brought to the community for consideration. And so then in August of last year, we did that. We held a workshop in the same room where you are this evening, um presented um a number of options at stations around the room where people could learn more about. at stations around the room where people could learn more about different options, discuss them, leave comments, make recommendations, fill out a form, give sharing their thoughts on each of the concepts being considered. And people could also fill out that same form through a poll after the workshop. I believe it was for at least four more weeks after the workshop. So there was quite a bit of opportunity at that time for folks to weigh in on the different concepts that we were considering. We then took that community input, further refined our land use um, options in consultation with city staff. And then took those to Iteris, our transportation consultant, knowing that there is concern in the community around congestion and the particularly increases in congestion associated with any land use changes. We wanted to make sure we had a clear understanding of what those traffic impacts would be. And so we had Iteris do a traffic analysis. It's the, it's reflected in the memo and the packet of materials you received. And got those results and then summarized it all in preparation for tonight's discussion. Next slide, please, James. And so, um, the hope is that once we get direction from city council, we then summarize that in a memo. And that, along with all the previous works, becomes the platform for us, um, drafting the general plan, uh, which I said earlier, will come back to you in draft form, go through extensive public review and then back to you for adoption. Um, I should note that what we're presenting tonight and the limited number of topics we're talking about tonight is not reflective of everything that will be covered in the general plan. It will be a full update to all three elements. And so there'll be a wide range of topics and subtopics addressed. We believe a member of the public asked previously if there were other hazard mitigation and safety topics that will be con, uh, included in the general plan. And the answer is absolutely. We know that Ojai is very susceptible to a number of natural hazards, many of which are being exacerbated by climate change. And that safety element will address all of those comprehensively. And in a way that's consistent with SB seven forty-three, which requires a full climate uh, vulnerability analysis and that that findings from that analysis be reflected in your safety. And so I think by way of background, I think that's what I was going to share for context. Um, obviously you know how to get in touch with Lucas and James if you have questions um, following tonight or any point during the planning process. And also on this slide here is the web dress for the general plan update where you can find all the materials that we've developed to date. If you want to take a deeper dive. But otherwise, at this point, I was gonna hand it off to Megan who will introduce the la, uh, the land use, uh, topic generally, and then get into the first land use option that we were hoping to get some feedback from you on. Megan?
Yeah, thanks, Ron. Um, next slide, please. Can everybody hear me okay first?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Can, can I ask? Just really quickly, um, so there seems to be some confusion as to what we're actually here to do and what we're here to vote on. And so we're not in any way approving a, you know, a, a, a general plan. We are basically looking at options on three segments of the general plan as a way to give our vendor a direction, a, a way to go, correct? So we're evaluating their findings from the community outreach. And they've come up with the, with these suggestions and/or options on ways to proceed. And we are to basically vote on or give opinions on these particular options that they're offering us as a way for them to move forward, but not to draft anything final, not to say, you know, yeah, I'm voting on this or no, I'm not voting on this. We are in the very preliminary stages. Am I correct? In this general plan, um, of the work that's been done so far, it's now ready for us to say these options seem reasonable or something like that. So I just want some clarification because, um, you know, we are, there are a fair amount of council members who are new, who have not been part of this. Um, and it is a little bit confusing. So.
Yeah. So in short, there were key areas that kept coming up in all the workshops and things. And so those areas, we did a deep dive and we looked at what could happen in those areas. And, um, we were very thoughtful about wording. So we called them policy options, not policy recommendations, because they're really options that can, uh, that we're bringing forward to, uh, for the planning commission to discuss, and then the council ultimately to decide which direction we want to go. And I'll give an example of Bryant Street. Um, you know, we heard a lot of feedback about, uh, uh, people have different ideas about Bryant Street. This is one option. Another option would be to not make any changes, you know, another option would be to give feedback about other changes that are desired. Um, but we analyzed, uh, available options, uh, based on the feedback we heard and how they can work. It's not a final decision. It's direction, which we then will take and will develop the next, uh, draft document that will then come back to the planning commission and the council as well. So.
Thank you.
Alrighty, um, so I'll jump back in. So again, everybody, my name is Megan McNulty. I am a senior planner with Ramen Associates and happy to be here with you all tonight and walk you through the various land use policy options. Next slide. Now, before I get into those, uh, options, I'll walk you through a couple, um, concepts that are important for us all tonight. So the first is general plan land use and general plan land use. It guides how land can be used um, in the future in Ojai through the year twenty forty-five, which is the horizon year of this general plan update. The land use policy options we're going to present to you, they explore different potential changes to existing general plan land use designations and as well as policies. So in the general plan, there will be a land use map. Um, the one that's shown on the slide here is the current general plan land use map. And this map shows proposed geographic distribution, um, of various land uses in the city. But also the general plan lays out, um, allowed density and intensity of land uses. By density and intensity, we mean the scale roughly of developments, how big and bulky a building can be. So as you could see, general plan is, a land use is important for regulating use and also kind of the look and feel of Ojai in the future. Um, the general plan land use map is really a foundational piece of this general plan because it impacts decisions, um, and policies in the land use element, but also related topics like, um, mobility and infrastructure considerations. Next slide. Now, general plan land use is similar to, but different from zoning and existing land use. So zoning is regulated in the city zoning code. Um, per state laws, zoning must be consistent with general plan land use. And if general plan land use is changed or updated, the zoning code must be updated along with it. Existing land use is an entirely different concept. And it refers to uses that are currently on the ground in Ojai. Sometimes though, existing land use does not conform with general plan land uses. So for instance, you could have, um, a retail establishment in a place that currently has a general plan land use designation of residential. When this is the case where existing land use does not conform with general plan land use, the use is allowed to remain. But if the site were to redevelop with a new structure or a use in the future, it would be required to conform. So next slide. So when we dig into these land use policy options, um, to start with the process of how we arrived at these options, which has been, um, you know, explained a little bit by Ron uh, previously, but the map on the slide shows the potential change areas I'll cover in the next couple of slides. And these include, uh, Montgomery Street, uh, the commercial manufacturing area and the Bryant industrial area, as well as the Ojai Avenue corridor outside of the downtown area in the blue area highlighted, um, in this image. So when we started the general plan update process, it was not a foregone conclusion at all that these would be the areas we would be studying for land use changes. But during the process, as James has said, we conducted, um, technical studies and heard a lot from the community that made us, uh, consider potential land use options for these particular areas in the future. So we started by identifying potential change areas and we are testing various options here for land uses. Um, and all of these land use options are potential, you could think of them as potential different ways that the city can go about achieving this vision for the future. Um, originally, our land use change area map covered more land actually than you, you see here. But through working meetings with city staff and based on feedback we got from city council and planning commission, uh, we narrowed down the potential change areas to the ones shown on the slide. Next slide. And this slide provides more context as to why we are looking at these three areas in particular. So first, the Montgomery Street corridor. Um, it became an interest, um, because allowing residential in this area was discussed at a planning commission meeting in the summer of twenty twenty-one. And when we brought, brought to the community and, um, community engagement activities in early in the planning process, we brought the idea of, um, potentially changing land use designation. Um, many participants were supportive of allowing some level of change in this area. And, you know, having the area be slightly different in character, um, compared to what it is today. In the Bryant area, planning commission also discussed at that same meeting, the potential for allowing, um, additional non-residential uses to diversify the economy in this area. When we brought this idea to the community, many were supportive of that change. And many people also during the community engagement process brought up the idea of potentially adding residential to this area. And then along the Ojai Avenue corridor, um, when we, uh, brought the potential for change to the community, many respondents thought of this area as a trans, um, an area of some change or transformational change. Um, and some people thought that residential should be encouraged. And again, you can, you could learn a little bit more about the specifics of community engagement, um, that we heard in the early stages of this process. This is a very small snapshot, but I think it's important to understand the foundations from which we, uh, developed these land use options. Um, so I'll start presenting a little bit more detail on the three options, I believe, starting with Montgomery Street, and then we'll pause, uh, for discussion on that area. So next slide. So first, the Montgomery Street corridor. Now, we're not talking about land use changes on the entire corridor. We're specifically talking about the portion between Aliso Street and roughly Oak Street, um, which is highlighted in the slide. Current land use mix here, um, currently on the ground, there's a mix of retail, office and residential uses. Um, the scale of development is mostly one story, um, sometimes two stories. Um, and currently thirty-five feet is allowed, um, in this area, which would allow it to three stories. Uh, the current general plan land use is general commercial, which allows retail, office and hotels, but not residential. So it's important to note here that the general plan land use designation, which does not allow residential, it's inconsistent with the actual land uses on the ground, which do have residential. In addition, the zoning code is consistent with the general plan land use designation in this area. Um, but that allow residential, um, uses like the general plan land use designation. So next slide. So heading into the alternatives workshop we held in August twenty twenty-two, we wanted to understand, um, which land type of land use mix the community wanted to see along Montgomery Street in this area. So we asked participants which land use option they'd like to see along Montgomery Street. Their options were no change, uh, allow residential and make the area, uh, village mixed use, which is consistent to, um, the designation of area to the west of this corridor. Uh, one option was to allow residential and make the designation, um, medium, high residential, consistent with the area to the east of this corridor. Um, we also gave them the option to, uh, say a mix of options or even provide us other ideas. And then we asked people to explain why. Um, next slide. So here's a snapshot of results. Again, I encourage you to check out the, the workshop report from the workshop and survey if you haven't already done so. But when the results came in about fifty percent of respondents selected no change. Um, the reasons though for citing no change are really important. What we heard, um, at the workshop and through the survey is that folks wanted to keep this area's character the same as it is now. They didn't, uh, most people did not envision change in this area. They wanted to maintain the existing scale, land uses and character of this district. And some respondents were interested in seeing housing types like single family uses, ADUs and live work units, which I believe are already, um, some of those are possibly already allowed in this area. Um, but there were some concerns cited related to making some changes in this area, including concerns about traffic, um, providing water for residents and preserving existing character. So this is the last slide of this section. Next slide. Um, so with that, we have an option for you to discuss. And that option would be, um, changing the general plan land use designation from general commercial, which does not allow residential to village mixed use. If we were to do this, this would allow, um, this would require changing the zoning as well. Reasons being, as I mentioned, many people cited desire to keep uses and character in this area the same as it already is on the ground. And this character does include residential uses. Again, the current general plan land use designation is not in conformance with what's on this ground. So making this change would enable this mix of residential, retail and office uses to continue. Lastly, if we do make this change, um, if it's, one thing to note to think about in the future, um, if we do not change the designation, if we continue to have this general commercial designation, if some of these residential uses that are currently there now do go away, um, you have to remember that new residential uses would not be able to develop in their place. Um, only non-residential uses would be allowed to go in. So the next slide is where we pause for discussion and, uh, Ron and I are happy to field any questions you may have about this area.
So real quick, before anybody jumps in at what Megan just said is really important, but I think we explained it in kind of planner ease. And so I want to explain it, uh, in, uh, maybe more general terms. The survey we did and the workshops we did, people said they didn't want to change Montgomery. But what Megan was just saying is that the, what currently exists at Mon- Montgomery is not actually allowed under our code. And so when they say they don't want to change Montgomery, we had to dig into that and realize what they're saying is they want to allow what's currently at Montgomery. And so by that point, uh, that's the, the point that, uh, Megan made about that right now there's residential uses on, on Montgomery, that if they, um, came in to apply to do residence now, they would not be able to. But their current, they, they were, they're already there. And so we had to look at that and realize that what we think people want is they want it to be the same as it is on the ground now, not what it is in the books now. And what it is on the ground now is more of a VMU, which is shorthand for village mixed use, which allows residential, retail and office space. So, um, just to sort of recap that, that's why, um, the survey looks like it says, don't change this, but it was reading into the detail to figure out what they actually mean, what everybody meant by that. So, um, so anyway, uh, sorry to interrupt Megan.
Thank you, James. Thank you, Megan. And, uh, so we'll turn to questions and comments from commissioners and council members. And, uh, if you could just bring it through the chair in the spirit of efficiency and fairness. Uh, anyone like to ask a question or comment? Suzie?
Uh, so we're mainly talking about North Montgomery, just to clarify that.
Correct.
And I like that we have a picture, a photograph of Meg's Ojai house. And I still don't know if she ever got what she wanted, which was to be legally village mixed use. Did that ever happen?
No, I don't think so. And I think that she commented on that as part of this process.
Yeah.
It's part of what we're referring to about people saying they want village mixed use.
Years ago. So.
Which is when we started the process.
Yeah, I would, I would definitely agree with what you stated, uh, James, that people would like to keep what there is, but and probably make it more pedestrian bike friendly. Because, um, yeah, that, that's all I have right now. Yeah.
Uh, anyone else?
Question about, uh, can I ask a question?
Uh, yeah, if you can just, um, let me know so I can, because I'm keeping it order here. Okay. Go ahead, Jeffrey.
On page twenty-seven, you have the pre-workshop. It looked like from my looking back on the summary you had in, on the line, that's about seventy people participated in that. So do you consider this fifty-eight want some change, twenty-seven want transformational change to be the same result that we got in the sixty people in August? Or, uh, it's hard to tell what they're, but what they mean by change. I guess you could interpret it, that means they want to change it to how it is, but it's not pretty clear. They do mention allowing residential, so maybe that is the same.
Yeah, and that's where I was gonna say, for Montgomery in particular, and this was one, when we just read the results and you read it and it's like, oh, that's surprising. We hear so many things like Meg from, uh, the nut house saying that she does want changes. And so, but then reading the detail and reading the, all the responses together was how we realized that, no, what they're saying is they actually want this to be a VMU area, but they think that it is already VMU because that's what it looks like when you walk down the street. Um, so to answer. Um, so to answer the question, that's why I don't think the. That that's why we're pointing out that just like the percentage of people who said no change, we don't think it really is, that's not really what they intended. Um, so.
Not no change to the land use.
Um, just reminder, um, if we could bring it through the chairs, because uh there was someone ahead of you, sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Um, so so I'm gonna restate, as is my way. Um, so essentially, we would be bringing into. Conforming what already exists. So my question to to you and or the planning would be. Um, would there be any risk to the residential um? Uh, you know, the single-family dwellings there, if they were to do a major remodel, or if they would want to put in addition, or. Or would it be legally non-conforming, and so there would not be a problem for them?
Yeah, as it is right now. It, the residential use in that zone is legal, non-conforming, and correct me if I'm wrong. And so if that use is somehow abandoned, uh, and then they come back and. Later, two years down the road, say we want to turn it back into a residence, they would not be able to, under the current code. Um, and so the um, the idea with this would be designating those as VMU would give the option to either be residential or. Um, or business slash office.
And and so just in in closing, I, that's my district. So if anyone feels like I need to go knock on doors and um do some canvassing and find out. Uh, in very personal one-to-one focus groups, uh, what they would like, I am also very happy to reconnect with my constituents and.
Um, Chair Quilsey and then John.
Yeah, thank you. Um, the planning commission some time ago. Received written notice from, I think it was eight of the eleven parcel owners in this area. And they all wanted to move away from C one, preferably to VMU. So there's been some canvassing done already.
Thank you.
Okay, can I share a trend?
Yeah, so I I live in that area. We walk down there all the time and it is village mixed use in in the nature of it. Um, but we've heard concerns that there's currently the way the mix is where. You'll have a a commercial property owner who has a commercial business in that space and they want to sell it. And they can only sell it for commercial, they can't sell it for residential. So it it hinders them on what they can do. And I have the example, but I don't want to say it.
Okay, uh, all right. Just one second, um, okay, uh, anybody else?
So if if I don't understand what someone said. If you, if we, by the time, I mean, can't we have clarification as we go along?
Yeah, I just think it's really important to hear all voices. So um, can we? Councilmember Whitman and then.
I have a question too, Betsy.
Okay, I'll get you Rachel, go ahead.
What what's your clarifying question?
The que- the that that was a a big point. Is that the same as like, for example, on North Ventura Street, it's mixed use, I'm familiar with that street. What he just said, I I've never heard that before, that if you're residents. To be mixed use is a residence, live-work.
Right.
That's what it is. So why on earth, when they go to sell? Did you, what did you?
It's not that right now. The way it is right now, the way the code is written, where they're zoned.
Okay, the way the code is written.
The the way the land.
And that's what we need to change.
Yeah, so people, I think the, what we're trying to say is people think that's VMU already, but it's not.
Exactly.
And so when we talk about changing it, we're really trying to update all the all the documents to match what's really there. That's what we're suggesting.
So then when they go to sell.
Right.
They'll have, it'll be the same.
Yeah, yep. Or they, or if it's a commercial business and they want to sell it as residential, they could. It would still be VMU, so you can have that mix of use.
Okay, thank you. That is so important.
And Mayor, if I could add one point on that.
Yeah.
Right now, any existing residence in this area that's zone C one, that's an existing house, with folks living in it, can be sold as a house. Because that existing legal non-conforming land use is transferable. However, if an existing commercial property, a little store. Somebody wants to sell that and the buyer wants to use it as a home, they cannot live in it because it's own commercial C one. The proposal on the agenda would be to shift the zoning and the general plan land use designation to village mixed use. Which would allow that existing store, if sold, to be used as a residence. Whether to do that or not is a policy choice for the council, but that's what's proposed.
So are are you saying we could make that motion tonight?
No, the council can direct tonight, if the council wants, staff to draft the documents to make that change and come back. To the planning commission and the council through the process. Nothing final can be decided tonight.
Okay, so can can we now direct staff to do just that?
We 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 still have comments. Um, okay, uh, next we have uh Councilmember Whitman, then Councilmember Lang, then Commissioner Murphy.
All right, so um, how many current residences are we talking about in that area?
I'm gonna see if Megan knows off the top of her head. I see the chart, but I don't think I want to risk counting it that quick.
I do not know off the top.
Okay, um, and then, so we don't know how many. We don't know how many are actually uh. Being used as live-work. That that's one of my concerns about, you know. All all of this is we, we talk about uh VMU and live-work. And we've had that in existence in Ojai for quite a while. But I don't have any idea how many of those units uh are actually being used. As a home and a workplace. A lot of the traffic um assumptions are based upon the idea that it's going to be somebody. Living and working in the same location. So um. Uh, uh, my other. Question is. I think Matt answered my question. So if it's existing resident, if a residence currently lives there. They can sell it. As a living, or as a, as a uh non-conforming use, that transfers to the new owner.
Yep.
What can't be done is taking a commercial and selling it. To then become a residential. Now, what what means are available to that potential purchaser? To get a variance or of some sort for that specific use.
You cannot get a land use variance. So variants can be used to vary development standards, setbacks, height, pervade surface. Variants does not work per state law for land use. So that buyer in that situation buying an existing commercial uh store and making it into a residence would have to apply for his own change and a general plan amendment.
Okay.
Um, next we have Councilmember Lang, uh Chair Quilsey might have an answer there, so we'll be right with you, Rachel.
Mr. Whitman with that. The the eleven parcels that were involved in this area, at least three of them are currently live-work.
Yeah, and I was gonna say, just from.
Say there are probably five or six that are pure residential, from one hotel.
Yeah, from the map on page twenty-nine, that that's about what we counted to give or take one. Uh, there's a map on page twenty-nine that shows um those those units as well. Um, but and then to just to the one point that I just wanted to add is um, the other issue is. And Matt can correct me if I'm wrong, but if the use is abandoned, which means not used for six months.
Hundred eighty days, yep.
Then you you lose the use too. So potentially that 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 could actually uh stop somebody from from. You know, uh, keeping the residential use.
And the use is, just to finish that point if I may, Mayor, the abandonment doesn't count if you have somebody with an active building permit. So if you buy a residence and then rehab it, and that takes long in six months, you're okay, as long as you've maintained an active building permit and all the necessary permits and approvals. For the, in this example, the the addition or something. But if you buy property, let it sit. Wait seven months, then you lose that non-conforming status. And then you're only allowed to use it for whatever that that zone allows. Here, only the things allowed in C one.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Councilmember Lang and then Commissioner Murphy.
Thank you. Um, one question I had, uh, I'm I'm aware of a couple of businesses that have had difficulty. Um, with with noise, uh, and that the noise of their uh businesses affecting other residents. And therefore having limitations to their commercial use. Um, and I'm wondering how a change in zoning might affect some of those business owners. Like, would this actually assist them in being able to, you know, stay open to the uh the hours that they want to be. They they want to stay open or to have the kind of events that they want to have and and things like that.
Yeah, we were just trying to kind of uh huddle up on that. Uh. The issues that I'm aware of are noise ordinance related and that um. Well, there is the, there's a different residential standard versus a business standard, and VMU is considered a business, or is in the business category. So. Uh, potentially, the noise standard would would change a little bit and might um allow them to to do a little bit. Uh, or be it, I think it's something like that ten decibel difference between the residential and business standards. So there's potentially that, but the reality is um, when the business. Was going to do that activity, they'd probably come have to come in for a conditional use permit. I think that's actually the case with um. The business that Councilmember Lang's referring to. And when there's, when the conditional use permit comes in, the city's able to condition it as they desire.
It's been done, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, James. Uh, Commissioner Murphy? Could you elaborate just a bit on what the transformational changes that were discussed at that meeting? What what do you consider transformational?
Yeah, I think that it was actually just, we, when we asked people what they wanted to see, that was a category. No change, some change, transformational change. And um, and so it's just, you know, from people's perspective, and I'll give, I think Bryant's actually probably a better example where you could see. What a no change policy would look like, what some change might look like, or transformational change, which would change the whole fill of of Bryant Street. On Montgomery, it's harder to identify, um, but twenty-seven percent of people said that they envisioned. Transformational change, which was a higher number than I expected. I actually essentially told the team. No one in Ojai is ever going to ask for transformational change, take it off the survey. We ended up getting twenty-seven percent, so, uh, but it wasn't discussed, like, there was no specific, like, here's what transformational change would be.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Starkweather?
Uh, when you mentioned work-live in a VMU. It's not that it's all work-live, it's it's work, it's live, and it's work-live. Is that correct? Okay, I just want to be sure.
Correct.
As far as um, I just want to clarify, tonight, we're only talking about the land use plan. We're not talking about zoning. So we don't want to get confused about those two.
Yep.
That's the next stage. And the third one was the noise ordinance. I wanted to, Lucas could clarify this. My recollection, recollection in the existing uh situation we had on that street. Without mentioning names, we applied the commercial. Noise ordinance to the business, even though it was next to two residences. Is that correct?
Was it, yes.
Cause it was all C one.
Difference, it was a difference.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, uh, anybody else on this particular section? Uh, Chair Quilsey?
One other, one other question, and this is on a chart that that we didn't go through. But uh, this is chart twenty-five, talks about projected growth.
Chart twenty.
What page?
Are you pages? Page twenty-five of Attachment B. And it it speaks to employment, expected to be relatively flat with shifts of of in type of employment. And that takes me back to something that I think is coming soon here, under the transportation thing. But we have analysis in here that says, if we change, for example, from. C one to VMU in this area, that suddenly the construction workers are all going to go away. And everyone's going to become an arts and entertainment employee of some sort. Um, that's in the Iteras report that is Attachment A in this book. And and I'd like to understand if the traffic analysis. That is being used to provide policy options here, is that reflected in the Iteras report? Because I still don't understand how construction people become arts and entertainment people. And the various other changes that are shown in that other report. If that is not relevant to the decisions that we're going to make here, then let's not worry about it. But if in fact, we're basing decisions or option choices. On what I think is flawed assumptions and analysis, then we need to go back and look at that. And thank you.
Mayor.
Mayor, uh, real quickly, I uh completely agree with Chair Quilsey on that. That was one of the concerns that I had about that report as well.
Yeah, thanks, James. Yeah, and I think the clarification, what does that mean, arts and entertainment?
Yeah, I was gonna suggest, and it's up to everybody, but I I do think it's sort of relevant to maybe understand how those analyses were done. Uh, before we dig too far, too much further. So we do have um, one of the speakers, Sean from Iteras, I think is, I think he's also on the Zoom if we wanted to ask him to. Maybe just start with sort of a high-level overview of uh an explanation of how the those numbers were um developed. So.
Sure, um, I I think it's 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 broadly a, that memo is a mix of. How in the future we would analyze um. Under the uh general plan EIR, how we would accommodate these um land use options. And uh, the way the travel modeling works is it 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 measures people, not land use. So you're having to take land use decisions and and transform them into workers or residents. And um, you know, them having different types of of travel characteristics. And so that was an attempt to to sort of uh. Look at how we would use uh the tools to forecast. Um, potential changes in in land use policy options that would sort of filter into the. Um, the travel analysis. It doesn't actually have any reflection on the results. That are shown today in terms of um forecasted changes to traffic on Ojai Avenue. Or um Maricopa Highway at all. Um, it it's really sort of a down-the-road. Um, modeling exercise. I don't know if that's more confusing, but um, it's it's. The intent was uh, our our tool is forecasted on a regional level by the Southern California Association of Governments. And they have their own forecast for what would occur in the um city of Ojai in terms of long-term growth. Which um, working with city staff, we all agree that it was a, not a very good reflection of what is. Currently proposed in the general plan at all. Um, so that's that's sort of that modification to what they were forecasting. Based on trends within the city and uh these policy option areas.
So if if I could just add to that, because I think that last part was key. Uh, because we've gotten a lot of questions about the Iteras study, and a lot of them boil down to, we have to start with the state's. Um, projections. And so when we talk about SCAG projections, what that is, is we have the state projections, and then SCAG, which is the Southern California section. Then took those and broke them down across the Southern California region. And they gave Ojai their share, and Ventura their share, and Oxnard their share, and all the different agencies. So almost everything in the Iteras report, as far as projections goes, comes from those those projections, which. I'll be the first to say, um, I hear constantly that nobody agrees with those projections. But those are the state projections that they're requiring us to to meet and that we have to use to do the analysis. And uh, I saw like the the headline in the paper today, and I'll just make this point. Uh, talked about uh, the city planning for a hundred and fifty-nine units over the next twenty-five years. Where that comes from is the state gave us a fifty-three out unit allocation over the next eight years. So if you get to twenty-five years, you have to multiply that by three, so it's a hundred fifty-nine, hundred fifty-nine units. And so I've gotten a lot of questions of why, where did that number come from? Why did we use that number? What did we base it on? It's the state's allocation to us, what we expect it to be over the next twenty-five years. And these, I think, Sean, the very simple explanation is all of these uh numbers derived from those. State allocations, which have now gone through SCAG, that have been allocated to us, so.
Thank you, James. Thank you, Sean. Uh, next we have uh Commissioner Starkweather.
So the SCAG projections, we don't have those, the details in this report, from what I'm looking at.
This is Iteras taking those and then putting them into.
So we have no hot wa- idea how that got converted. It seems like we're. So we have no idea how that got converted. It seems like we're doing employment projections backwards. We're determining employment projections and how people are deciding the land use is going to be. That's not the way I've normally seen employment projections. They look at what's likely to be the types of employment a place like this might be able to attract, or people would expand. We seem to be deciding our employment projections that we're going to change the land use, and therefore we're going to get uh, this increase in professional and retail and arts and entertainment workers. I, I just find that a little troubling, number one, the one. Number two, has the Chamber of Commerce had any role in, in evaluating this? Because there are groups that supposedly trying to diversify employment and so forth. And there hasn't been any discussion about this, because it just seems like arbitrary, demented.
They have not. And then I think the simple answer I give you is the whole, the whole process of the state giving allocations is backwards. So like, I think we've all kind of agreed on that and the, you know, it doesn't really make any logical sense. In reality, it's just allocations from the state. So I, I wouldn't argue with you, but we sort of have to work backwards because that's how the state's process works.
And just to clarify, those allocations are indiscriminate, not discriminate, correct? Yes.
I don't know that I understand that.
Well, it's, it's arbitrary, yeah.
Yeah, I think I, I would call it that. I'm, I'm sure SCAG would try to defend it in some way, but I think that's fair.
All right, if we can just come through the chair, because we do have a queue. Next, we have a Council, Commissioner Trent, and then Councilmember Whitman.
Uh, Attachment A, page three of 14, and the Iteras report, they talk about how they came up with the 159 units. So they basically took the 53 that they allocated for this round in the arena cycle. Um, every eight years, they have the arena cycle. So basically, they, they took that 53 and they just multiplied it by three. And that's 24 years projected into the future. That's where the 159 comes from. So to your point, it is arbitrary.
Exactly.
Plus, we had 300 before.
Right, right. And the next cycle, we could have 300, or we could have 20, or, you know, so it's, we're making a projection based on what we have now.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Rule has a clarifying question.
Yeah, that was, that was my clarifying question is basically last year, I mean, last cycle, we were at 350. This cycle, we're at 53. Next cycle, we could be at whatever it decides, whatever the state, you know, decides.
Your guess is as good as mine.
Okay, so this is really just, this number is a shot in the dark, best we can do, because it's all we have.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
And, and just to clarify, these laws go through 2025, confirmed?
The, um.
I mean, the legislature is continuously rewriting the Rena statute process.
Yeah.
Our current Rena process, the housing element that was approved by the council and is presently awaiting HCD review and certification, is from 22 through 20, 21 through 20, 2021 through 2029. So we won't have to do another housing element until 2029. But it'll, assuming the state doesn't make a massive blow it all up change. If what's expected is a whole bunch of changes on how the Rena process works, those will come into effect with our next Rena cycle starting in 2029, 2030 through eight years after that. Um, but all that said, I have no guarantees the legislature doesn't do what they do.
Okay, um, we, uh, Councilmember Whitman and then Commissioner Murphy?
Yep. Okay, I've got a couple of big picture questions. Um, I don't know how much they'll impact Montgomery, but so we have an existing general plan. And I understand the process we're doing is an update. Does that mean that we're adding to the existing general plan and the things that are in there now will stay the same? Unless we specifically direct them to be changed? Or is there going to be innerlineation? Put into things that are in there because they're being impacted by what we might be doing in, you know, these specific areas we're addressing?
Yeah, uh, that slide that Ron showed, which was in, in the packet Attachment B, page six. It shows our current general plan elements in the years that they were um, adopted, and then what the, the items, the elements that are a focus of this update. And so the, what we're going to do is essentially rewrite these five elements that are the focus of this update, the land use element, circulation element, safety element, environmental justice element and housing element. And then the other elements, ones that we aren't um, doing the focused update on, for example, uh, noise element will be adjusted based on what needs to be adjusted from these updates, but they won't be completely rewritten. So the ones that will be completely rewritten are those ones that we've called out as the, the focus items.
So will we be getting like a track change version of the general plan at some point, so we can see if things have been removed that we would want to keep in or or are we going to get that type of a um, feedback so that we can see so what's disappearing and what's coming in?
In a nutshell, the proposal is for the five elements on the table. It's a completely new, new document.
Yep.
It's not interlinated red lines. It's not add this paragraph, keep that paragraph. It's a completely new document for those five elements. Housing, land use, circulation, safety, environmental justice. And the housing element, the housing element was a red line, thank you. The other four are completely new documents. And then the rest of the, the general plan, that will be redlined to reflect those changes, based on whatever policy comes out of the, the main five. That's what's proposed through the current process per the prior council's direction. Whether to do that or not is of course policy choice.
Are you, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Murphy is next, and then Councilmember.
But I want to follow up, related question is so how does the housing element, which has been at least, I think from our standpoint finalized? Uh, we, remains to be seen what HCD tells us about that. How does that play in to all of this?
We, we adopted that first and partially because that one actually had a uh, deadline. I mean, that's not really the right word, but the last housing element was 2014 to 2021. And we needed to adopt a new housing element and get it into compliance. And uh, all cities had the same complaint about, you know, having to put or most cities, they had the same complaint about having to put the cart before the horse and having to do that before the other items. So we have planned from the beginning that as we go through the general plan update, there may be revisions to the housing element based on the, the, um, the, uh, how the rest of the update develops. Um, so that, that's always a possibility, that, that we end up having some updates, you know, a year or two down the road, so.
Okay, Commissioner Murphy and then Councilmember Rule.
Um, I'd just like to make the point that those Rena numbers have, have been a goal. They are not a projection of real growth. So the document here is, the Iteras, is that how you say it? Iteras? Is basing numbers on, on a hope or a goal and not what is really going to happen in Ojai. Is that?
I think it's fair.
That's fair?
Yep.
Okay.
But isn't there a pretty strong movement at the state level that they're going to
Yes.
Change that from a goal to a mandatory compliance?
It feels like that. I think that's coming.
They're going in that direction.
Uh, Councilmember Rule and then Commissioner Trent.
Um, I, I kind of wanted to bring it back specifically to Montgomery and that block that we're talking about. And if we could get with specific numbers, like what do we have now of each? And what would us approving a um, village mixed use? Uh, it's one block. I just, so, so, I, I mean, it's a great theoretical discussion, but that is a charming block, and I would just like to know the numbers, get specific and, and figure out, you know, when we talk about, you know, traffic, okay, if we're talking about four, we're talking about four, you know, four conceivable units or, or stores, what are we talking about in traffic? I mean, we're not talking about a 20-page, you know, uh, traffic survey. Like, what are we really talking about here in one block? If I could get that, that would be really helpful.
I'd like to see that also.
Any such information will go to everyone.
Well, it, it might be here. I don't know.
We have it, but not here, here physically, so um, might lean to the idea of, of uh, you know, kind of having a two-parter discussion, but um, uh, we can provide it to the group after, or following the meeting.
Yeah, my, my hope was that we, we, we could move forward, not, not, you know, come back to, to talk about a block, but okay, okay.
One thought would be the idea is to get general direction tonight, and then when we come back and bring back with the, you know, the sort of, um, bring that back, that we bring it back with information.
Okay, thank you. Yes, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Trent.
Oh, I'll save it for later.
Uh, any other comments or questions on this section, Susan?
So, so did we give you the general direction to make sure that we can, that Meg's Ojai House and other business places where people now live can become legal?
I haven't heard general direction consensus yet.
That's my.
But that's, that, that's one option.
How do I?
Make motion.
Well, we would need a motion.
Motion on the table.
But we do have a motion on the table. Uh, Councilmember Lang's motion, and it has a second.
Okay, well, um.
Not to, not to make any motions until the end of the, yeah, and then make, and, and then the one, the motion that is.
Because we have a motion on the table, so let's, so.
Uh, you can do a substitute motion.
Maybe she would like to withdraw that motion till we're done with this segment.
Well, I think it pertains to all the segments.
I know, but it.
Um, I, I would.
For making a motion.
If I, if I could, I would with, I would withdraw that motion for, to make an exception for this, because it sounds to me like right now, um, if with, with this new information or knowing that these, that um, that it's not zoned for, for mixed use, that, that it seems to me that it would, it would, it would harm the businesses that are already in existence not to proceed with moving forward in this way. Is that, is that correct?
And would you like to return to your motion at the end of the presentation?
Yes, I would.
So do you want to make a motion?
Yes, I, I might need help wording it, but we have Meg in the audience. She's impatiently waiting three years. So what wording do we need so that she can be?
I think it'd be something like motion to direct um, staff and the team to uh, uh, to.
Draft, yeah, go ahead. Draft the necessary documents to amend the general plan land use designation for the Montgomery Street area north of the Liso to be village mixed use. And make other clarifying changes.
Yes, that's my motion.
Okay, uh, do we have a second? Second, okay, uh, roll call, please, Weston?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Lang.
Yes.
Mayor Stix.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Francina.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, uh, we will move on to the second section.
Thank you, Rachel.
It was, it is a big, you know, it's, it's a big, this, big decision, so.
Alrighty, so the next section is the CM area in the Bryant industrial area. And the CM area refers to the area with the current general plan land use designation of commercial manufacturing. So you can see that, um, that gray area outlined in the second image. Um, currently, the mix of land uses in this area, it's retail, office, institutional, public, industrial uses. Um, you can see the distribution of land uses um, in the map, the first map in the center on the top. And the I'm speaking myself, sorry. Um, you all, you can all can hear me now, okay? Um, the scale of buildings is mostly like one to two stories, uh, thirty-five, up to thirty-five feet is currently allowed. Um, and currently today, unlike Montgomery Street, the existing land use mix is generally consistent with what is permitted under general plan, the current general plan designation, as well as zoning district for this area. Next slide. So again, this was an area we had heard about. Um, in the beginning stages of this process, people envisioned some sort of change change in this area, and we used this um, alternatives workshop to understand exactly um, what type of change people wanted to see. So we brought a couple of questions to the community. Um, we asked if new non-residential uses should be permitted in this area. The, the light gray CM area. Now, currently, a mix of non-residential uses is currently allowed. Um, we can go into exactly what uses we're talking about in a moment. But um, we wanted to see if, if people would be supportive of expanding the allowed, um, you know, uh, range of uses in this area. And then as a follow-up question, we asked again about the appropriate types of non-residential uses they'd like to see in this area. Um, so there were a couple of options that people could choose from, offices, restaurants, education, public uses, or even selecting other. And we found that there was interest um, from the community in seeing research and development uses, office uses and creative uses like art galleries and studios. Um, currently, some of these uses are not allowed in this area or only allowed conditionally. And many participants were especially supportive of creative uses. But one big thing we heard is that this is, you know, the, the industrial area of the city. So a lot of people were concerned about, you know, making sure that industrial uses can continue in this area and are, you know, are able to thrive in this area. Next slide. We also asked if residential uses should be permitted in this area. Um, you'll see in the, next to the gray area, there's a light pink area. Um, and there are currently some residential uses in that area and the area joining the um, commercial manufacturing area. And again, the idea of residential was something that people had proposed during workshops at the beginning stages of the project. But when we asked this question, about two-thirds of respondents said that residential uses should not be allowed. Um, for those who responded yes to this question, that they'd like to see residential uses, about 88% of those participants supported live-work housing types, um, and 65% supported affordable housing on um, certain SPL overlay sites. So with this input, uh, next slide, we formulated two policy options for you to consider for this area. The first option is related to non-residential uses. Um, and there's options to expand the breadth of non-residential uses that are allowed in the CM area. So some uses that can be permitted, um, that would, sorry, would be able to be permitted are listed here on the slide, and I do have more details on the next slide about these uses. And again, these are options that are either not committed, permitted, or are only conditionally permitted. These are options that were supported by the community during online engagement and the community workshop, and also can complement the existing mix of office and industrial uses in this area. The next option for you to consider is go back one, please. Um, the next option to consider would be, uh, can, thank you, would be conditionally allowing live-work housing units. Um, again, this would be supportive of the creative uses that people were generally supportive of in this area. Um, it would, housing would not be allowed outright, though. Um, these live-work uses would be conditionally permitted, and they could complement the emergence of creative uses along this corridor. Now, there are a couple of questions for you to think about here. Um, so first, when we get to the policy stage of general plan development, you know, we will have to think a bit more about industrial land use compatibility. Um, and if housing were allowed, we'd have to think more about ensuring that potential like live-work uses would be able to thrive and people would be able to, you know, be healthy and in, in this area of industrial uses. And then again, another thing, um, if we do change these general plan land uses, this would require updates to the zoning code. Now, next slide. So this slide here, which I believe is my, the last in this section, um, this provides a little bit more detail on potential uses, um, non-residential uses that could be allowed in the CM area and the current status. So art galleries, for instance, it's not currently permitted, and we've also listed some uses in the city where these uses are permitted for comparison. And again, we came up with this list of uses based on, um, you know, what the community provided feedback on, what we heard from people and engagement. Um, also just by looking through the zoning code, and also just by, by, um, you know, using our experience developing general plans and thinking about. and thinking about creative industrial districts or industrial districts in general, and what type of uses are allowed in other cities in these types of areas. So with that, next slide, I will turn it over to discussion again.
Thank you, Megan. Any questions or comments on this section? Commissioner Murphy and then Chair Quilsey.
I am very concerned about the prospect of having these non-residential but live work kind of, of applications in an industrial zone. We have a very limited amount of space in our town where we can have industrial businesses. And if we fill them up with, if we fill that space with coffee shops or whatever, we will have no opportunities to bring in industrial businesses that could give us some serious employment. So that's my overriding concern over this whole.
Chair Quilsey and then Councilmember Whitman.
And, and Betsy, I'll be after.
Okay, okay.
Two or, two or three points. We have currently, if, if we could bring that map back up that showed the detail of the area. There are, on the east side of South Fulton, there are in amongst the industrial parcels, there are some residences now. These are people whose, who are currently legal, non-conforming as residents. They're in the same position as the people we were talking about on North Montgomery. That if, if the residence were not used for six months and then someone comes, comes in and wants to reuse the residence, they won't be allowed to because the zoning and the land use does not permit it. That's one. Two, residential may not nominally be allowed in CM districts, but the SPL overlay seems to trump the basic zoning wherever you go in this city. And there's a two acre parcel that we don't need to talk about tonight, but it's along Bryant Street. And it's going to be proposed as residential units. And I don't see how that squares with this stuff that we're going through right now. Third, it says, this is on page thirty-six, which we just saw. Conditionally allow live work housing for artists. Is it the council's intent? If it decides to allow live work housing in this area, to limit it to people based on their profession? Just an open question.
Not my intent.
Um, next we have, okay, Councilmember Whitman and then Councilmember Lang.
So I was on planning when they went through the process of creating the Bryant Zone. And I do recall, actually, we, we did one of these before council adopted, but we did a lot of meetings leading up to that. And one of the, there are a couple of big issues that were pushed, and one was that we had to have a place that did not have residents so that we gave the potential for industry to thrive in that area. That, so that was a, a driving principle of creating that zone. The other part of it, and I don't know that this still is operative or in existence, but it was felt to be very important at the time. There was a program environmental impact report, which meant that in industrial, commercial uses had a streamlined way of getting approved without having to go through the environmental impact report because of all the conditions that were created. Now, I, I don't know if we've effectively done away with environmental impact reports now, because it's been a while since I've seen one required on a project.
Oh, we were just talking about that, the Bryant one you mentioned in particular, we, we are not familiar with. I don't think that's something that's still in practice.
Special plan.
And I know that it does, it's still in the books, but we haven't had an applicant in many, many years who sought to tear off of that programmatic EIR. If somebody showed up tomorrow and tried to tear off of it, we would look at that as an option, although one challenge is the longer you get in time from a programmatic EIR's adoption, the less consistent it is with sequel as it reads that day. And somewhere in there is a not fine line or a not hard line about when a programmatic EIR is too old to use. If an applicant showed up tomorrow seeking to approve some sort of industrial use, we would first assess the sequel question based on what they're proposing. Is it exempt or not? If not exempt, then the next step would be look at the programmatic EIR, and if that would work based on whatever that particular use is. And further, the council could direct as a policy matter that the EIR that will be done for this general plan update could serve as a new programmatic EIR for those uses.
So my concern would be that the more we change the zone and the uses in the zone, the less likely that that program ER, EIR that they put so much effort into would be likely to be sufficient or applicable to the zone. And I, I guess I have a general thought that with the project that we can't, you know, specifically talk about. I think that we need to see what happens with that project before we think about making more changes to that zone. And that's my general impression.
Um, next we have Commissioner, uh, no, I'm sorry, Councilmember Lang and then Commissioner Bennett.
Yeah, thank you. Um, one, so I had, I had two concerns about that, about uh, that property. And one is, and this is where the, the jobs numbers came into play for me. You know, I think if we are going to take away the, the manu, the manufacturing and industrial, light industrial use zoning, then we lose out on potential for economic diversity. And that is something that, that I think, you know, this is one of the last, one of the few remaining light industrial zoned areas in the valley. And so I think that there is potential there for, for having businesses come in that would have higher paying jobs, union workers, those kinds of things. And so I, I'd be concerned about, about limiting our choices for the future. Let's say if tourism started to decline and we were looking for other solutions. And then the other piece that I wanted to bring in too is, you know, we talk about environmental justice. And if we are going to have residents with, with, into with light industrial or manufacturing, I think there could be, and we're talking about low income, and I know we're not going to be talking about any specific properties, but, but if we're talking about, you know, affordable housing in an industrial area, I think that that really calls into question an environmental justice piece of this conversation too. And, and finally, just one more thing, uh, you know, I, I have a family of artists and sculptors. And so I know that actually some artists work like manufacturers and work with metals and welding and all kinds of toxic substances. So I actually think that an artist's space or artist's studio space would be appropriate in that area. If we, because loud noises, toxic substances, I, I think that that would be something that I would be open to.
Okay, uh, next we have Commissioner Bennett. I just want to echo the Commissioner Murphy's concerns about maintaining our industrial area, because that's all we have in Ojai in the four point three square miles. That's it. And it's really important to support people who meet, need to make some noise, mechanics, welders, et cetera, et cetera. And if we get rid of that, then it's gone forever. So, uh, Commissioner Bennett, and then we have Councilmember Rule, and then Commissioner Starkweather.
People who want to, people who want to make noise, give off odors and have toxic materials. Once those areas have residents in them, you'll have voters in them. And all of a sudden, whoever represents that district is, has got a voter who can come in and stand at the microphone in the city council meeting and say, this is my neighborhood and I live here. And, uh, you know, I think.
Messing with my air.
You are messing with my air. And I don't like backup alarms at four in the morning. I think that, I, I, I think the mayor's point is, is a good one, and that is once it's gone, it's gone. And, and, and strangely enough here, we have to concern ourselves with introducing democracy into an industrial area. Because once you've done that, you, it'll be a, a residential area before you know it. Cause those people are going to want to be heard and they're going to want fair, fairness in terms of air quality and noise and all the rest of the things that everyone else wants to have in their neighborhood. So I, uh, um, I think that is very important to be tread lightly. And when I, when we moved here many years ago, uh, you know, the economic development was sort of the, the big issue. And it was probably at the time that it was created, the Bryant Circle area was created as an industrial use. And, you know, right now we want housing. So all of a sudden it's like, well, let's take this underutilized piece of property and turn it into housing. Well, again, uh, I, I think when it's gone, it's gone. And I think it's very important to keep it in its current use.
Okay, um, Councilmember Rule and then Commissioner Starkweather and then Councilmember Whitman.
Um, I'm fine. My question's been answered. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Starkweather?
I assume when we're talking about keeping this, uh, commercial industrial, we're talking about heavy industry? Because there's plenty of communities that mix all kinds of uses with light industry that are not toxic and so forth. A lot of artists do sort of manufacturing, actually. And so I, I'm, I'm a little confused about that, that separation. My other question is if we're going to try to get industries, when's the last time we had an industry that came in there? Do we have an idea? Uh, it seems pretty empty. I, I've been there lots of times. My question is, if you're going to get industry, all the people I know that are, that would want to do uh, like startup manufacturing companies are going to need workers. And usually going to need young workers and maybe talented workers. So I think that raises the question of where are these people going to live? Which I don't think at the moment we have places for them to live. So if we're going to act, and we don't really have a strategy with the chamber and with the city for actually promoting industry out there that I've ever seen since I've been here. So I, I guess those would be my concerns. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Whitman?
And then Betsy, and then Mayor, uh, after what Councilmember Whitman, I'd like to say some.
Yeah, so I just wanted to add. Commissioner Bennett's, uh, comments led me to recall that there was quite a bit of discussion of the need for economic diversity in the community. Um, that we had to have different types of jobs and that this zone was going to be important to that goal. I recall that there was a lot of discussion about a campaign to bring those businesses, but I don't recall that ever happening. So I think the point that Commissioner Starkweather made i- i- is a, is a valuable one, but I would orient it towards the idea that we created this zone about fifteen years ago. And, uh, we need to give it the full potential benefit that would, that it was intended for, and we should be promoting if we have to bring um, a specialist in to help us promote bringing businesses. I have to believe that a startup business would like to be able to advertise to their employees will, will give you a high paying job in Ojai. Uh, and I think that would be attractive, at least to some businesses and to the employment and uh, so we need to publicize the idea that that, um, and promote the idea that that opportunity is available.
Can I just clarify? First, we have Commissioner Murphy and then we can have, um, just to clarify, okay, um, pardon me? Oh, and yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, she was, thank you. Thanks. Um, and just to clarify, one of the main goals that we gave the, the Chamber of Commerce several years ago was to diversify the economy, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Uh, next we have Commissioner, uh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Lang, and then we have Commissioner Murphy and then Councilmember Rule.
Yes, I wanted to speak on this. Actually, I have been actively working with Jamie Fleming on, uh, on strategizing economic diversity ideas and options and, um, and I'm also on the Economic Development Collaborative for Ventura County. And so this is something that I'm deeply passionate about and that I have been, uh, looking at. And so, uh, I don't have any efforts that have gone as far as I, I can report. But knowing that there is all of this incredible property and there are opportunities there, this is, um, this is something that excites me, uh, you know, in thinking about how to, how to build our economy. Um, and the other thing too is I just want to speak to, uh, uh, Commissioner Starkweather's comment about, uh, jobs and housing and housing and jobs. And this kind of reminds me of the witch came, which comes first, the chicken or the egg? If we don't have housing, if we don't have jobs, we can't attract people who, you know, to, to fill housing. And, and if we build houses without opportunities or without activities for people to do, then we're increasing traffic outside of our community. And so we're bringing money out of the community. And so I think that, you know, one of the things that, 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 that is, you know, that we're, that these conversations are, are helpful for is really thinking about a holistic plan. So it's not just how do we build houses and, and address this need, but it's how do we see the vision for the entire community?
Uh, Commissioner Murphy and then Councilmember Rule.
I just have a quick legal question. Uh, do the SPL overlay sites trump anything that we are going to do to this area, whether we keep the zoning as is or change it? Does the, does the?
So yeah, I think you answered the question. The question is, does, does the existing SPL overlay zone, the special housing overlay zone, is that modified in any way by these proposed changes? And the answer is no. The existing special housing overlay zone as adopted by the city council and most recently re-adopted with the new housing element and the related zoning change, zoning preservation, that remains in place. So these changes do not change those zones. The council can separately change that, but that's a very different conversation. So the housing overlay zone, the SPL overlay zone sites, that remains the overlay zone site.
All right, next we have Councilmember Rule, then Chair Quilsey, and then Councilmember Whitman.
Yeah, so.
I, I never got a chance to speak. I had my hand at the first.
You, you go, Suzie.
I can wait till after you.
No, you can go ahead.
Okay, so I just want to address a couple of things. Ra- Rachel and anyone else? Okay, for anyone who is new on the council, um, I think it's really important that you look at the business. We've lost huge businesses and you should find out why. We lost Lynda.com, Altoura Coffee, um, uh, what, what was that other, Taping, where so many business, we had huge ITI. Yeah, so it's, it's no use bringing in new people if, if only to lose them when they are successful. And that's the pattern that we've had. You know, I, I don't know if that's fair. That's not, maybe not the whole analysis, but there has been a pattern of losing businesses when they become successful and they outgrow Ojai. And to your other point, we already have a lack of housing and we can't say, uh, the chicken or the egg. It's a fact that we have people commuting into Ojai already because there is no housing. That's, and we need data on that, you know, so. So, so we, so, um, okay. So that point. And then I had a, a, a smaller question. How, um, how come it says that under, uh, on page, uh, 36, attachment B, permit new non-residential uses? We already have multiple, um, dance, martial arts, health and fitness facilities in that zone. And I don't even remember that when I had one that we ever got a conditional use permit. Maybe we were illegal, but, um, we had, what?
Or you predated it.
Predated it? Okay. But so, but what, what's the explanation? Why is it saying new when those already exist in that zone?
The help, so the next page after that, on page 37, it shows the current status of what's allowed and what's not allowed. And so for example, you were talking about the health and fitness facilities. Right now those are conditionally allowed. But not, um, not automatically permitted. And then art galleries are not permitted right now. Art antique, collectible and gift cells not permitted. Plant nurseries, garden supply stores not permitted. Uh, live work not permitted. Medical services conditionally permitted. So, um, so somebody right now can get a, uh, I believe can get a CUP, a conditional use permit to have a health, uh, fitness facility. But, um, it, it's not permitted by right.
Okay. I, I, I do understand that, but why is that?
It's just the current zoning, the current, yeah, yeah. Yeah. And so part of, you know, going back to sort of what we talked about with Montgomery is like, some of what we were looking to do is try to make sure that we're matching reality and what's sort of evolved over time and what's happened. But you know, the, um, sort of the key question I think everybody hit on here today is like, the real question as far as allowing just residential uses in that area, not related to the SPL overlay. Cause that is there. And so that is what it is. And it's not part of this discussion. But, um, allowing, uh, more residential uses in that area. Um, the obvious question becomes how compatible is that with the other uses that are happening there? I think when we look at health, fitness facilities, you don't really see a compatibility issue. It's, it's pretty compatible. And I think that's why then going back a couple more slides, that's why 66% of people, I think it was, said, sure, let these other resident, or these other, uh, business uses in. But then there was 66% of people who had concerns about allowing the whole Bryant industrial area to become residential. So I think that's sort of the basic question.
Okay. So, so my comment is there's, I, I think there's quite a few derelict abandoned buildings, especially at the beginning. Why are those buildings, can we find out what the problem is? Can we contact the owners? Why are those buildings just sitting there year after year?
I would say, um, respectfully, I think it's sort of out of the scope of this conversation. If, so the city has a vacant building program. And so if there's complaints or concerns about a building being abandoned, people can report it and we'll do code enforcement on it. But, uh, I think for today, and I expect, yeah, eight 15, and we still have a few items. I don't think we want to get into the code enforcement program. So, um, yeah.
If I could add to that very briefly. The reason though, many of those buildings are vacant in, in like high, high level sum. The property owners have found it more advantageous to keep them vacant than to find a tenant who's willing to rent or a seller, buyer who's willing to sell. I don't know the specifics of each of the properties and we're not going to go through that in, in right now. But they've, they've made the choice to leave their land fallow, finding that better than finding a tenant or than, than renting it. And the question for the council and the commission to consider as a policy question is, would changing the mix of allowed land uses help drive the property owners to find it, find a way to put it to productive use or not? And as part of a different conversation, the council could also consider strengthening or adjusting the vacancy, uh, the, the vacancy, vacant building ordinance and the vacancy programs. And that would be not on tonight's agenda, but that's the second broader question. But it's sort of what drives a property owner to leave land fallow? They find, they think it's better for them for whatever reason. Can you change their conversation or change their calculus by changing the allowed land uses? That's the policy question.
Um, next we have, uh, council member Rule.
That's very important. We can't just drop that. We were supposed to give direction. And it seems with our housing shortage, to have these buildings sitting there, maybe the, uh, who, how do we investigate that? Maybe the owners don't know that they could change it to residential if we decide to do that. It just.
If the council decides to allow that, right now the zoning does not allow residential, except for the SPL overlay zone sites.
So which is beyond the scope of this conversation at this point.
The question is whether the council wants to adjust these, adjust the zoning to allow the proposed land uses and to allow live work. That's sort of nice discussion.
Okay. Well, I would, at what point do we tell you what we want? I want to do.
Let's finish. Uh, next we have council member Rule, then Chair Quilisi, then, uh, council member Whitman and then Commissioner Starkweather.
Suzie, so if I understand what you're saying is you're saying that there are vacant houses in this particular, um, area that we're talking, vacant buildings and that they should come into this conversation because, uh, it's relevant to how we decide what this zoning should be or something to that effect.
Something to that effect. Yeah.
So, um, yeah.
It's our chance to give direction.
Right. Okay. Um, I just wanted to, to make sure that we all understood that. So I'm trying to figure this out. I go down there often. There's no businesses really. There's three storage. There's, you know, a detailer in the parking lot. You know, it, it looks a little bit abandoned, I have to say.
And it's my, my district.
Right.
And that's where I store my stuff.
Right. And so, but, but likewise, we, we, we have no, we are at a shortage of places for housing, even if we do infill. So, um, it seems to me, we don't have, we're, we're trying to seed in industry, light industry there. We're also need to have places for housing. And any businesses that we do seed there are going to need housing. I'm not in any way, I don't have a conclusion for this. It just seems to me that an either or, i- is a little bit, uh, it cuts off options. Um, you know, yes, we can try to get, you know, businesses and industry down there. But we haven't been successful. We've been successful the other way. They leave. Um, and we need housing and there's a lot of people who, you know, I mean, that live workspace is very appealing to a lot of people. That aesthetic is appealing to people. It's something, you know, especially to artists and, and those who work, you know, sort of with their hands. So I'm just saying, I don't know right here, what is the right answer. But especially since we're thinking for however many years we're thinking, but we need to be realistic about bringing businesses in, you know? Uh, so, so I'm going to leave it there is like, I don't know, but I would not want to go one way or the other without some more thought.
Uh, we have, uh, Chair Quilisi, then council member Whitman, then Commissioner Starkweather and then Commissioner Trent.
Thank you. Uh, very briefly, uh, in this, in this meeting, I'm presuming that any motions that are made, seconded and voted on are done by members of the city council, not the planning commission, correct?
Correct.
Then I would ask if whatever else we decide to do with the Bryant area, could we pick out those purely residential parcels that exist right now on the east side of Fulton Street? And make them VMU? It doesn't keep them from having manufacturing or, or commercial business or live work in them. But right now we're, we have those people in the same position as the purely residential parcels that are along North Montgomery. So could we fix that, please?
So you're asking the.
Any comments?
I'm saying I can't make a motion. I can't second.
Yeah, just.
Would one of you please?
Just to make clear, I understand, um, what you're asking and I'm, I'm looking at this little tiny map, but Fulton.
Go there, it's.
Fulton has got, um.
There, there are a few.
So there's homes on the.
There are homes.
Residential on the west side of Fulton.
All of the west side of Fulton is residential. There are some residences.
Some residences.
On the east side of Fulton.
And you're suggesting.
Please make those people legal conforming instead of legal non-conforming.
So merge those lots with that zone.
VMU that's across the street.
Yes.
That's your proposal.
That's, that's my request.
Okay.
Can you make that motion?
But we're.
My.
I think maybe the motions all come later, but.
Yeah. Well, yeah.
Could we do that?
Do you want to finish?
Yeah, I have a, I do have a question. Is there, is there just one overlay in the Bryant area or is there more than one?
I'm running off memory on the map. I think it's just one.
Remember one. Yeah.
Just one.
Mm-hmm. But next to.
Overlay.
Okay. And then, uh, my, my next question is, if we're, if we're looking at additional places for housing, I think we have to look at what we have now. You know, what's in, uh, what's line, you know? What's RANA compliant, uh, in terms of, you know, and, and what are we going to need to do um, in the future? And I mean, I've, I've always wondered, is it a, an appropriate strategy to save properties for future RANA, uh, cycles? If you've got enough on your map today in terms of, uh, residential potential, um, shouldn't you potentially save for a rainy day?
Yeah, there's, to sort of answer that, there's talk that the state moving forward is basically going to require cities to identify more sites in addition to what they've already identified. Uh, so I think that sort of answers your question where the sites that are already on our map, the next cycle, the rumor is, cause they haven't said what they're going to do yet, is that they'll say, okay, we already have those. So now what additional sites are there? And so that is, uh, we don't know yet, but it's something we have to think about because one of the realities in Ojai is it's 4.2 square miles. And, uh, if they say we already accepted all these, eventually we're going to run out of sites that we can identify. So, um, that's the, the rumor that's, we've had some discussions with, um, um, League of California Cities and some other people who say that seems to be where it's going, but we won't know until they update their, their requirements and standards. So.
And the other thing I would add to that, if I could, is that in any conversation about amending an existing adopted housing element to put in the reserve bank, uh, a site, uh, that, that may raise some challenges with the Department of Housing and Community Development. As they, as they tend to look, even under current regs, let alone what may change with the laws, they look at your existing sites list as a bank and, and don't want to see withdrawals from it. But that's a broader conversation that we can absolutely study if there's direction from the council to study it and return in the coming discussions regarding the housing element, which will eventually return to the council once we have sorted through, uh, each of these comments. So there, there's an opportunity to have that conversation discussion in full beyond just tonight.
Yeah. And it wasn't my thought process that we would withdraw anything from that's been designated for, uh, addressing low income housing needs. But, um, it may be valuable to have places, uh, in mind for a future round.
Um, okay. Next finished? Andy, can I just quickly? We have, we have, uh, Commissioner Starkweather and then Commissioner Trent. Do you want to go after that, then, after Commissioner?
I was just going to make a suggestion. Maybe we pull the housing element out of this discussion.
I don't think it's in the discussion.
It's not in this discussion.
The point I was making of the, nothing we can do with this is going to change that at this point. So sort of thinking outside of that.
Okay. All right. Uh, Commissioner Starkweather and then Commissioner Trent.
Okay. I just want to address economic development. Uh, I'm a big proponent of it. I served for 12 years on an economic development, uh, corporation that promoted the economic development. And I think we're putting the cart before the horse when we're talking about, promoting development and we're, and we have sites because normally you would want to do an economic analysis of what your strengths and weaknesses are, what you can attract. Often you look at regional patterns of potential that you could attract here. The example about, uh, that Suzie was bringing up, uh, Commissioner Francina, excuse me, city council member Francina. Mayor for town. Uh, sorry, sorry. Um, that it, some of the industries, cause I've talked to people that knew about those industries leaving. And what happened in a lot of them, they started to, to need more employees. And we didn't have housing for them. And it was easier for them to move to Ventura or some other place where those employees could find housing and if they wanted to expand. So they kind of reached the point where they could house the people they had. And then they wanted to expand and they just didn't feel Ojai had enough employees or enough places for highly skilled employees that would want to live here. So, and also what we have on the ground now is essentially what the market is telling us we're getting. So we're not exactly, you know, getting those industries. So I, I think one of the things I found very frustrating about this process was we had a SWOT analysis is what I've used before in economic development analysis is what your strengths, weaknesses, threats and opportunities are. I got it backwards. But anyway, we had supposedly one done by the consultants, but he never actually outlined those four categories. And that's really important, I think, from a planning standpoint and a community standpoint. So you can actually see what they listed were the strengths, what they listed were the weaknesses, what they listed were the opportunities. And so the city council and the planning commission and the community can say, well, that's accurate. We agree with that. So it, it becomes a starting point where everybody's agreeing what we're facing, but we don't have that. We have a 85 page, whatever long it is, list of each of the types of, uh, analysis. But we don't have a summary and it seems like if we hire this consulting team to do that, we should get that as part of our contract. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Trent?
I'll be quick. Uh, this is just a point. Um, so we've had this zone on Bryant Street for 15 years, I believe. Right? So currently we have 2.4% of our jobs are in manufacturing. We have 29% in education, 30% in leisure. So it's been there for 15 years, but we still only have 2% in manufacturing. Uh, something's not working there.
Okay. Uh, any other comments on this section or questions? Is there?
Just to, not to leave that hanging, could you discuss that with Rachel and the chamber? Yeah.
Yeah.
Were you able to hear that? What John Trent just said? Cause it was a little hard to hear.
Yes, I did hear what he said.
Okay.
And perhaps we could get a report back from the chamber because that was one of the main goals.
I will talk with Jamie about that and see if we can get some data about the companies here. And also, um, Suzie, to your, to your previous point, to see what, to do some in, um, investigating on what drove some of those companies to leave Ojai. And, uh, and yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll do some, some more research on that.
Yeah. I'd be interested in seeing the data. For example, Lynda.com moved to a much bigger venue.
Yeah.
Um, so that makes sense. They just needed more room.
Bigger house than Ojai allowed.
Let's not go there.
How big a house would you want? We have some gigantic ones here.
It was much more than 10,000 square feet.
Commissioner, Commissioner Bennett, let's not get personal. Commissioner Bennett?
Just, uh, two quick observations. Um, I recently toured two, um, uh, businesses in Bryant Street. Both of them make things. One of them is a commercial bakery and the other one is a coffee roasting company. So, uh, where do you put that if you don't have Bryant Street? And, and, uh, you know, there's no, there's no question. We have a housing. And, and, uh, you know, there's no, there's no question. We have a housing problem, but, but we also have an employment problem and we need the ability to have places where businesses can be put. And, uh, uh, one of the, we, we have developed a thriving restaurant scene here now that wants things like good fresh made coffee that's made locally and good fresh made baked goods that are made locally. And we've got them on Bryant Street. So.
And I would just like to echo that I recently met a couple of gentlemen who, uh, manufacture equipment for surfing and scuba diving. And that is really the only place they could do that. So we need to preserve that and invite other people who might be interested in doing that there.
And, and one other example too, I'm sorry, did I?
Go ahead.
One other example is, is Magic Hour, you know, it's a multimillion dollar business that employs people at a, at a living wage. And they have manufacturing operations there, shipping, distribution, everything located within that area. And even looking to expand. So there are companies that are doing it and they are employers. So I think there's a real opportunity there.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions on this section? I would, uh, I would, okay, I would suggest we take a break pretty soon.
What about, um, uh, Chair Quilisi's request? At what point do we address that?
Separate the residents from this.
Okay.
If we don't want residences in this zone, then let's take the ones that are in it now and move them out.
Okay, is there?
Zone them out. By zoning. On paper. Yeah. Make them VMU instead.
Fix the zoning on the current residences.
Okay, is there?
So that they're not in the M1.
But if that, one of them would be VMU, wouldn't that be allowing them?
Is that, is that part of what we're doing here or should that come up by a different path? It goes to planning and then the city council for, to approve changing the zoning.
I think.
Independent from what we're doing.
That'd be useful direction to get, because when we bring back our policy adjustments, that would, that could be tied into that. So.
Right now, you want?
Yes. Yeah. Just to clarify, because I think people heard two different things. Um, Chair Quilisi saying that the current houses that are classified as M1 should be correctly classified as VMU.
Change them from legal nonconforming to legal conforming. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, is that?
Like North, well, gone.
So do we need a motion for that?
Yeah, we need council direction on that one. We appreciate the commission conversation, but we need elected official direction on that one.
Uh, Commissioner Murphy, yeah.
I guess. I'm not sure I understand. If we are able to move the boundary, ma- make that Fulton Street VMU so that they become legal. But can't you just move the boundary of the, of the, um, CM?
That's all I'm suggesting.
But they're mixed together.
Just.
Those, those properties are currently zoned, correct me if I'm wrong, M1 or MPD.
M1.
M1. M1. And so we would need to actually change the zoning of those properties to VMU.
And the general plan land use designation.
And the general plan land. Yeah, thank you.
And the.
Would that go for the whole street?
That's the question for the council.
Yeah, I think what I.
Do you want to check them or do you want online?
Is there, um, a council member who'd like to make a motion?
Well, so I would like to make sure that one, we're notifying people who could be impacted by it so that they can provide their input. And then number two, I'd like to see a map of what's being proposed before I would consider voting yes or no on moving a line I haven't seen.
Okay.
So, so we can direct staff to get that information and then we'll come back.
The council could make a motion to direct staff to prepare an analysis of adjusting the general plan land use designation and zoning for the residences that exist east of Fulton Street, on Fulton Street to be shifted from M1 MPD. I'm sorry, M1 and, uh, CM to VMU and return for discussion of that. That would be a.
I would move to do exactly what you just said.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, could we?
You said.
All right. Uh, could we have the roll call, please, Weston?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Councilmember Lang.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Francina.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Mayor Sticks.
Yes. All right. Thank you. Uh, we will take.
Before we take a break, if we could, so the underlying question still was basically three options, no change, permitting new non-residential uses like art galleries, et cetera, or conditionally allowing live work housing. And so is there a decision on those or do we just want to, or do, or you know, what, what's the process we want to take?
I think there's.
Before we close out Bryant.
Separate decision and, uh, we should, we need to revisit Councilmember Lang's motion at some point. So.
Wait a minute. Wait, we, we, we will revisit Councilmember Lang's motion. That's, but what are you asking?
So the, um, the original question for Bryant was, do we keep it the same or do we change it? And if we change it, you know, the vision of it, I should say, and if we're going to change the vision of it, is it permitting not new non-residential uses? Or is it even going further and conditionally allowing live work housing? Um, and this is on attachment B, page 36. Those were the two options. Obviously the third option unset is not changing anything. But sort of the purpose of discussing Bryant was to get direction on which of those three paths to take.
And if I could just add, there is always an unsaid fourth option, which is return for another discussion.
Well, and revisiting.
Not, not, I know the staff doesn't want to say that, but.
Yeah, I know you don't. But revisiting Councilmember Lang's, uh, original motion was to take a little more time, do another workshop. And, and personally, after hearing all the comments, um, about, you know, this is our last, our, our only industrial section. So I think it's really important to get a lot of community feedback, uh, feedback from people who are, are working there currently. Um, so I would, I'm sorry, James. I would, I would advocate to, uh, wait on that.
Are, are you also advocating that we have another workshop or how, how are you, how would you like to proceed that we get more information?
Um, I, I would like to revisit Councilmember Lang's, um, motion at the end of the third section, which includes a workshop and we, and we'll vote on that. Um, all right.
So, but as part of that, don't we want to give staff direction to investigate? What's hap- do we, are we asking that we need to know more what's happening now? And then are we personally going to go over there and check out the businesses? What, what are we proposing?
Do you, uh, Councilmember Lang, do you want to?
Yes, um, I, I actually, I think, I think finding more information, um, you know, one, I've, I am leaving this conversation with a number of questions. One, why are businesses leaving? Why are there vacant, what, how many vacant properties are there? Um, and do we have, uh, can we get a sense of why properties are vacant? Um, and, uh, and then I'd also just love more public feedback about what they see and what they know. So, so I think in terms of staff, looking at what is currently there. And, um, and then, uh, I, I will connect with, um, with, uh, the chamber and find out why our business is leaving and, and so, yeah, so I think getting some more information. I think we can direct staff to get more information.
Thank you. Okay. Um, everybody ready for a little break here? So we'll come back in seven minutes. Thank you. Can we have quiet, please? Um, and, uh, we will move on to, uh, the third section. Uh, Councilmember Lang, I just wanted, do you want to, uh, repeat your motion now and we can vote on it or do you want to? Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, do you want to repeat it, please?
Yes, um, just that we wouldn't, that we would, uh, wouldn't make any decisions, that we would, um, workshop, I apologize. I have a COVID brain tonight, um, that we would, uh, not make any major decisions on this until after we workshop it. Um, and.
Thank you. Uh, so we have a motion and we have a second. Any comments from the council specifically? Um, I would, I would like to just add that, um, I would support uh, what you said, Councilmember Lang. I think it really needs to reflect, uh, the current council's goals and, um, versus the past council's goals. Um, and there was, the past council, uh, decided not to have any climate element in this, um, general plan. And I think that doesn't really serve the council that is seated now. So I think that's a really, uh, important item that needs to get in there, um, before we move on.
Mary, which I saw listed. Climate was listed. It's in here.
Well, the, the council and James and I talked about this earlier. Can you, um, go back in history a little bit, James?
I saw it.
No, so climate element is not included. Um, and anybody, uh, who was, I think it was one of our meetings at the bowl, um, a couple of years back during COVID. We had a couple of meetings where the council discussed whether to include a climate element in the process. And ultimately, I think, I don't remember the exact vote, but it was voted not to have a climate element. I think it might've been a three, two vote.
Yeah.
And so I was asked earlier, do we have a, do we plan to have a climate element in this general plan update? And the answer right now is no, unless the council revisits that decision.
And, and I think the climate element, climate clearly needs to be woven into every element of our general plan at this point. Um, and, and I think Councilmember Lang, you also mentioned social justice. And we've already talked about economic diversity. Um, so we have a. So we have a motion and we have a second. Could we get the roll call, please?
Can, can we talk a little bit about it?
Sure, go ahead.
I would like more specificity on how we plan to move forward. I see this as a 10-year program and right now, because everything is just, well, we'll workshop it. We're going to get rid of this, this, and this, and we're going to add this, this, and this. So I'd like some specificity on how this is actually going to proceed. You know, I don't want, I don't want meetings till midnight every week. I really don't. So I want us to figure out how we're going to move forward, what we want. And how, how we're going to get that information, you know?
Councilmember Francina?
It was already my understanding that we're not making any major decisions, but we're giving staff direction. And I don't want your motion to preclude that. And I, and we also aren't done, so we don't know what comes next. And maybe we will make a big decision. We don't know that yet. You know, we don't know. I want to support your motion. There's common sense to your motion, especially with the new council. But I still would like, I prefer to vote at the end of, of, at the end of all this.
Councilmember Lang, do you want, would you?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that, that giving, my motion does not preclude us from giving staff recommendation, giving, having staff come back with recommendations. Or if there is something, just like we did with the Montgomery property, if there is something that's really, that's like a common sense, to use your words, decision, that it doesn't preclude it. It just says that before we have our consultants go back with other, with their marching orders, so to speak, then that we would workshop it within our, within our own council.
Okay, we have the motion and we have a second. We have the roll call, please, Weston.
Just one more comment. This, as I understand it, this was, as far as adding residential, which I, I don't know if that's what the issue is. 67% of the respondents said they do not want to change the residential or non-residential component to this.
Okay, roll call, please, Weston.
That has nothing to do with the motion, does it?
Yeah.
And that's just.
Well, motion is to have, no, no, we have, it's the same motion.
I was trying to make sure we had the motion and I understand the motion is to have another workshop to get further feedback. And I guess that's the gist of it.
Take no action on the other points on the table.
And, and also build in, I mean, the workshop, build in the climate component specifically.
Already on what we mean by have a workshop? Who, who, are we talking a council workshop? Are we talking a public workshop? Are we talking?
I took it and so I'll say what I think and then the.
Yeah, thank you.
Makers of the motion can correct me. I heard that the idea was wanting to get more community feedback. So I think I would take that as a workshop for the public, not a council meeting, a workshop for the public. So we would schedule an additional workshop on these policy questions.
And specifically getting more diverse input at the workshop, younger people. And now we can get people from Bryant Street who own businesses there, for example. Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second.
Do we do a friendly amendment? Or is it understood that that would have to be on a Saturday morning and not at night? But we can't expect people to come at night, can we? For that kind of workshop, if we want diversity, we want younger.
Councilmember Lang?
Yes, I agree with her, that, that having it when more, when a more diverse group of people could come.
I did, James, you did tell me that we've had two workshops on Saturday and they were not well attended in the past. So, I mean.
That's, that's been my experience. The last council meeting we had on a Saturday, we didn't have a single person attend.
Okay, and for example, the Green Coalition, Green Coalition's workshop was very well attended. And that was on what day of the week?
Saturday.
Okay, all right, well. Okay, well, we could, we could provide some good food. Anyway, moving on, so we, can we get the roll call, please? We have a motion and a second.
Well, the, so I need clarity, so I'm just going to say that. So the climate, I, I heard different things with the climate. Weaving it into the, all elements of the general plan is what we are currently doing. A separate climate element is different. And so I need to understand that. And a separate climate element, just to be clear, would have costs. Or it would either have costs or we'd have to figure out how we're going to do it. Because typically, it would have, the reason, one of the reasons why it wasn't added at the time when the council discussed it before is because it would have been additional scope on the contract, so.
And one approach would be to ask if the maker of the motion, the second or concur, direct staff to return with some cost estimates for the options regarding a climate change or a climate action plan or a climate change resiliency element, which could include it as an additive item at some price or as a replacement for some of the other work on the table, options and prices. I'm assuming we can get that from the consultant options, yeah.
Councilmember Lang? As the ma, the maker of the motion, does that sound good to you?
Yes, that sounds good to me.
Okay, Councilmember Whitman is the second?
Joel is second.
Okay.
I want to, James, you said something very important. You know, my recollection is that the free, that was, I think, a three, two vote. But my understanding was, the justification was that we have, that, that you did just now say that climate is considered in every element. It's woven in.
That's the idea. There is a fundamental debate, which I think is still the fundamental debate, which is, I think, it's just the split of, I think some people feel like you create a separate climate element and it's stands on its own, that it's more effective or maybe more, you know, gives the message that the city is taking that issue more seriously versus the approach we chose to take at that time was building, weaving it into the entire, into the, all of the elements so that it was sort of built in. But then we don't have a climate element, you know, we don't have, we aren't able to, at the end of the day, say we have a climate element.
Okay, but, but weaving it in seems the most important.
That's, that's the council.
That seems the most important.
Yeah, it's a policy question, so let's vote and we can decide. Weston, can we have the roll call, please?
Roll call.
Wait a minute, I'm not ready to vote. I'm not ready to vote. I, are we voting that we're, we're not necessarily going to do it? We're voting first to see how much it costs?
I think what the vote would be to have us come back with options. So, you know, we got a bid and here's what it would cost. Or, you know, trying to think creatively of other ways we can do it.
Okay, maybe I should restate the motion, Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
As staff understands the motion, it is as follows. Take no action tonight, providing direction to staff on the other land use change points that were in the packet. No action on that. Coupled with second item, direction to staff to have another public workshop on all of these issues, which would be held on a Saturday with the goal of driving additional diverse turnout. Third point, secure options and prices for adding a climate change resiliency element or climate action plan element as an additive item or as a replacement for other proposed work. Securing options and prices. Three elements, no further action tonight, direction regarding an additional public workshop and adding a climate change resiliency element cost estimate to then come back to council for deciding whether to add that or not add that. That's how I understand the motion. I'll ask the maker if I could ask through the mayor to confirm.
Uh, Councilmember Lang?
Yes, that is, that is correct.
Final comments before the, the vote, Councilmember Rule?
Yeah, I'm not sure why we're, we've gone through two of the three on land use and we haven't touched the others. Wouldn't it make more sense to go through the third on land use and see if by chance it is as obvious? Like, like to stop to do this now, if we're going to continue on the final component of land use, seems to me it would make more sense to do this at the end of land use rather than now, since we haven't delved into the third component of land use. And it's really possible that, you know, we won't be able to come to consensus, but we won't know that until we actually move forward. So I would make a friendly amendment that we wait until we've gone through the third component. Also, because we might want to add additional things to that motion as we just had, now have five things on this particular motion.
Councilmember Lang? Rather, are you accept or decline that amendment? Councilmember Lang?
I would accept that amendment.
Okay, so the amendment is to wait, correct, until the third?
Till after the third segment.
Okay.
And then when we get to the motion, unless there's a major change as we go through this last part, I would separate those three elements. Because I'm in favor, for sure, of having another workshop at a time that we decide is most convenient. Don't know about the, the other two.
Are you making a friendly amendment?
I'm making, yes, I'm making a friendly amendment to separate the three elements.
Okay, Councilmember Lang?
I would accept that amendment.
Okay, all right, then we will move on to the third and final section.
Mayor, we never had a vote.
Uh, well. The vote, yeah.
Okay.
After the next section, we're going to vote on what to do with the.
Okay, so I think. And if I could jump in very briefly, Madam Mayor. My suggestion would be to take the presentation on the third section, take any public comment that might be hanging out and then vote on the motion that's on the table. Unless the council directs otherwise.
Okay, thank you, Matt. All right, let's go, we're, take it away, Ron, please.
So Megan, Megan, can we continue with the Ojai Avenue portion? Hopefully you're still there and haven't followed.
Yes, I sure am. James, can you pull up the presentation again, please? Yeah. Then full screen, right now you can see my notes. There you go. So our last section is the Ojai Avenue corridor. Current land use mix there, retail, office, institutional and public. Currently, there are no residential uses along the Ojai Avenue corridor. Scales about one to two stories. And the general plan land use for most of the Ojai Avenue corridor is general commercial, which is generally consistent with the uses on the ground, as is the zoning code. An important point to consider here is that we are looking at portions of the Ojai Avenue corridor that have this general commercial designation. We're not looking at the area with the, in the downtown with the arcade that actually has a separate land use designation. Next slide. So at the community workshop, we asked if residential uses should be allowed along the Ojai Avenue corridor. Again, not in the, the downtown arcade area and just in the areas with the general commercial designation. And if yes, what type of housing uses should be permitted? About half of respondents said yes to allowing residential uses along the corridor. And then the recent citing were, you know, a need for more housing in the area and the benefits of creating more activity along the corridor. However, there were concerns that people cited like traffic and parking impacts. And then we asked people who said yes to this residential question, what housing types are appropriate? About 74% of residents, that residents responded cited live work. 65% affordable senior housing. And then about half supported multifamily units of about four units. So, next slide, we have an option for the Ojai Avenue corridor with the area with the general commercial designation. We have an option to create an Ova, Ojai Avenue housing overlay. That would include, allow housing as a conditional use. This, again, this would not include the arcade area and I'll cover the geographic extent of this overlay in the next couple of slides. We have a couple of different options there. And then under this overlay, the scale of housing allowed would be consistent with, or could be consistent with R2, so about 25 feet, two stories. And the reason why we're recommending the scale is because it's consistent in scale with existing buildings as well as adjacent districts like the VMU and some of the other residential districts that allow housing adjacent to the general commercial district. Overlay would allow mixed housing types, so including kind of smaller scale multifamily types, mixed use as well as live work. And again, there's considerations to think about zoning updates, parking, mobility, and just making sure that people on the corridor are able to get around and navigate easily. Next slide. So here are the potential options for the extent of this overlay, which are outlined in yellow in the three images. In option one, the overlay would span the entire length of the general commercial area. In option two, it would extend from about half mile from downtown. And then in option three, on the, the western side, it would extend from half a mile from downtown. But then on the eastern extent of the overlay would extend to the, you know, further east in city limits to the edge of the existing general commercial area. Next slide. So you may be wondering why, why consider limiting the extent of the Ova, Ojai Avenue housing overlay. Option two, again, it limits, it's limits the overlay to a half mile of downtown. That's about, like in kind of planner speak, it's about a 10-minute walk to destinations. So it could be beneficial to kind of limit housing to this area within a half mile of downtown so that residents could easily walk or bike to downtown. And it also provides, you know, a base for, of customers to support downtown businesses. Additionally, we have learned through our existing conditions research and the SWOT analysis, there are some sites in the, the area that we think could have potential over the next 25 years or so of redeveloping due to factors like assessed value, low floor area ratio, and just through identification of, of sites on the ground. So there are opportunities in this area for sites to redevelop and potentially turn into housing. And then again, finally, there's housing adjacent to these areas and like the VMU area and some of the, the orange residential areas that you see on the map. So it could be compatible with some of these surrounding uses. And again, option three, it extends the housing overlay a little bit further east along the corridor. And really the rationale there is that there were other opportunity sites that could be potentially redeveloped over the, the general plan horizon within that area. So areas that were, you know, there may be greater potential of housing actually being developed there. If there's, if that option were given to property owners. Next slide, from here, Ron's going to talk a little bit about traffic analysis findings.
Thank you, Megan. And actually, it's good we have Sean here as well this evening if you have questions. But this is kind of the bottom line slide. So Iteris used the existing traffic model to run a traffic analysis of the impact of making all three of these sets of land use changes. The, the change to VMU along Montgomery, the addition of, or the, the diversification of non-residential uses in Bryant as well as the conditional allowance of live work in Bryant as well as allowing through, as a conditional use through an overlay housing along Ojai Avenue. And so considering if all those changes were made, they ran the model to see how it would impact traffic and congestion in Ojai. And what was really neat to find out is that it actually, because it, it better aligns future development with an efficient use of the circulation network, it actually models that there would be less congestion if these changes to, were, were to be made. So on the left in the chart, you have what the model predicts in terms of increases in traffic through 2045, if the existing land uses are, are, remain the same. You'd see about a three and 0.6% increase in traffic on Ojai and 0.7 on Maricopa. In contrast, if the changes were made, you'd actually see a, a reduced, a less amount of increase in traffic on Ojai, 2.5 to 3.2%, as well as on Maricopa, zero to 0.3. And that's the synopsis, if people have questions, the analysis, Sean is available.
Yeah, and Ron, I can just chime in real quick. That, that's, the assumption here is that 159 units are in both of these scenarios. It's just a little more bent towards the growth, the potential change areas in the proposed land use change side of that. So it's, it's the same number of housing units in each. It's just their location within the city that's different. And as Ron pointed out, that's, that's because they're sort of closer to areas where there's more walking and biking and they're closer to services, so there would be, you know, presumably fewer vehicle trips from those housing. So there would be, um, you know, presumably fewer vehicle trips, um, from those, um, housing units.
Thank you, Sean. Um, sure, go ahead.
Uh, Sean, what, uh, you mentioned the hundred and fifteen units, that's what we're basing the future growth on. Um, are you guys calculating what the, uh, population would be based on that housing increase? And what density figure would you guys use?
Uh, yes, off the look back, I think we just use, there are average housing unit, um, values. I think we used three persons per household. I have to check. We may have used different ones between multifamily and single family.
Thank you, Sean. Um, commit, uh, Commissioner, oh, Chair Quellstein.
Thank you. Uh, as, as part of the background here for all of us around the table, considering this, please keep in mind, there are currently two SPL sites on Ojai Avenue. One is a portion of the school district property and the other is immediately adjacent to that to the east. So there's already two good sized parcels where if somebody wants to put in affordable housing, there's nothing we can do about it. They're gonna do that anyway in the general commercial area.
Um, just, just remind, we were gonna finish, um, public comment and then we'll move on to discussion and questions. Okay, so let's, uh, begin with Bill Miley and then Kathy Lattes and then Balance. Is, uh, Bill still here?
Is this working?
Yes.
There's an appearance, yeah. Okay, I decided to come back. So, um, I started out with ten comments and now I have seven. Um, in reviewing the three options for housing overlay on Ojai Avenue, I choose number three. Goes to the, goes to Gridley, it's open, suitable for mixed use housing, I like that. Item two, housing types on Ojai Avenue. Because single family units and market rate are very expensive for most people. At least seventy percent of single family houses should be deemed restricted affordable. And one of our guiding principles, I just found out, is housing variety. Item three, the beginning statement, the city two thousand forty-five general plan, the vision statement, produce an ethical tweaking. It says we're a mosaic of people, which we are, it's a bunch of pieces put together. But the income levels in paragraph three, the term should be softened by adding most. As many of our renters are in economic trouble and facing increasing rent burdens. Only the wealthy can afford to live here now. So also, we're not offering folks and families, third paragraph, equal access to services and opportunities. An example, the opportunity to buy a rent affordable housing in this town, we don't offer that now. Who participated in the workshops, you already heard about that. Forty-four percent of the people participate over sixty-five. Twenty-five percent of the population is over sixty-five. I would suggest that a lot of what's in this plan is tinged with age attitudes and experiences and truly does not express what Ojai should be working towards in two thousand forty. I support, um, Councilwoman Zalang's idea of workshops. Um, Jeffrey Sarkwiler's idea of focus groups. But in order to do this, it's gonna take a lot of work. Stakeholder groups, ethnic groups, a residential survey of everybody in the town. Um, and that would be really best. It's, it's gonna take a lot of work though. The travel notes in the plan show there's a lot of influx and outflux, which means that we need affordable housing. I'm gonna do a summary. On page seventy-five of eighty-six, it talks about supporting our fire safety council. We need to do that when the budget's coming up. And lastly, complete street says vehicles need to be parked and people need to get out of them. It should be important to get the agreed upon parking study done. And I would like to see a multi-level parking structure to limit single surface parking lots.
Thank you, Bill. Thanks, much appreciated. Uh, Kathy Lattes, then Balance, and then Carolyn Goldwasser.
So let's see. Uh, I'd like to congratulate the, the, uh, people here on, um, actually a pretty robust policy discussion. So that was very, very, um, positive. But, um, I, I've worked for a long time, uh, career in city planning. I was on the planning commission for a while when we were, uh, kind of the early part of the general plan up to, um, last May. And, you know, um, policies are, uh, people have said it, but it's true. Policies are the most important part of this general plan. And we have to be willing to put, um, the effort into, um, allowing community input on this. At the very first workshop, well, at the, yeah, it was a vision, the visioning workshop. And the results were written up in the December twenty twenty, um, results study that's in your packet. Oh, I, it may not be in your packet. I think it's on the city's website under the general plan. And that, that visioning workshop was pretty well attended. I think it was about the most well-attended of anything. Important issue, the most critical issues were identified by residents of the community. Um, and number one issue was open space and natural areas. Number two, small town character. Number three, quality of life, high quality of life. Number four, engaged community. Not sure what that means. Number five, historical character of downtown. Number six, commitment to environmental sustainability. I think that actually should have read climate change. Um, and, you know, we really need to find ways to get a greater spread of, of variety of folks in the town. Contributing to these policies or at least doing a workshop where they're becoming aware, where the officials have a, have a policy discussion because policy discussion and ends and results in policies that matter. It's really hard when you don't have policies in front of you to talk about it. You can't see what's missing, what, um, what maybe sh- should be added, what's, what's maybe there and should be taken out. Um, and I think we really need to talk about policies that are going to protect the town, the, the, the small town character, um, and a lot of what's really precious to us. Uh, we have, the city does have a public information officer, so why not utilize her skills and outreach? I think, uh, what about a flyer to every single household in the town? Anyway, what, one more thing, just one final thing. We've, so we, we, these important significant issues were raised at the very first visioning, uh, workshop. And, and from my point of view, we've kind of jumped over a thorough discussion, vetting, um, flushing out of what the policies are that we want to create. We have, we, we don't, we could have issue statements that, you know, kind of categorize these, these important policies with an issue statement that flushes out what this really means and then your policies can derive from that. And, um, I'm sorry, I forgot. Um, uh, I did have something else to say. Um, uh,
Good. Thank you, Kathy.
Sorry, yeah.
Much appreciated.
I had one more thing to say, but can't remember, so.
You can always write to us.
Yeah, write us.
Uh, next we have Balance, I think he left. Uh, Carolyn Goldwasser and then Heidi Whitman.
Carolyn left.
And then Steve Colome. Uh, Heidi? Heidi Whitman, then Steve Colome, and then Larry Steingold.
Good evening. My name is Heidi Whitman and I live in the city of Ojai. Um, tonight I heard a couple of, um, guiding principles that don't really seem to me to be being considered in this whole planning effort. One is supporting an Ojai Valley economy that prioritizes overall human and ecological needs. Another one is aggressively addressing endemic environmental challenges such as climate change. And, um, the last one, which isn't, isn't one of those, um, guiding principles, but I do not see where we are trying to balance tourism with the quality of life for residents. And so you can talk about how a live work unit adds point two five traffic trips during the peak hour. But that is sort of ridiculous when we're, when we have a million visitors a year. So I would really like to see this effort talk more about what policies are we going to have to balance tourism with the quality of life for the people that live here. So, thanks.
Thank you, Heidi. Uh, next Steve Colome and then Larry Steingold.
Uh, well, first I want to thank, uh, the, the council and the, uh, planning commission for truly a robust and good discussion here tonight. It's, it's been, um, pleasant to, uh, to see, uh, a conversation like this. My view is that what you're doing now is probably the most important process in your terms. I mean, the general plan of the city of Ojai is supposed to give us a view for what's Ojai will look like in twenty forty-five or twenty fifty. We've almost lost sight of that as we start to micro, um, uh, view these, you know, four parcels now. What would be ideal is if we had a, 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 a crystal ball and we could look at twenty forty-five or twenty fifty and say, what do we expect Ojai to look like? What do we want it to be? What do we want to preserve? What do we want to protect? What do we want to enhance? And think of it in those very, very positive terms and make sure that those guide you as you get into the weeds in terms of, um, the particular policies that you're looking at. I also want to talk about representativeness. I mean, the, the, the first community visioning document that was from December twenty twenty, there were about three hundred residents. There were broad, bold kinds of comments. Then in April twenty twenty-one, the visioning workshop had, um, sixty percent of the residents were from Ojai. Forty percent were from outside of the city of Ojai. Um, looking at this group and, and this board, most of them were seniors or elderly. Um, there were only forty-five residents who were from Ojai. So if we're looking at, I mean, I'm an old guy myself, so to be somewhat morbid about this, in twenty forty-five or twenty fifty, a lot of us are not gonna be here. Where are the, where are those who are going to actually be here carrying forward in twenty forty-five, twenty, twenty fifty? Um, and just as since I taught graduate statistics, a little, um, raw in my, and it, to be talking about sixty-four percent of residents or of, of participants when there, that might really only represent thirty-eight people, I think is incredibly misleading. Then you, what should be there are the actual numbers. I, but there's a little, uh, book called How to Lie with Statistics by Huff, which I gave people, my students to read in graduate statistics. Um, it would be really useful to see that because it's truly misinformation. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Uh, next we have Larry Steingold.
Thank you very much. Um, congratulations. This is very nice. Uh, on the VMUs, um, I think you should do the VMU and all the connection properties that are adjacent to it and also maybe do Fulton VMU. And also consider Ojai Avenue as a VMU and tie it all together. So you have one zone for the city and everything that's commercial along Ojai Avenue and it is all VMU because it'll make life easier. And if those businesses or those properties have some pushback, they can finagle it just like they did for the VMU. They have buffers. They'll give somebody a free pass for the first sale and then it reverts. Uh, on the Bryant Street, forty years of industrial real estate commer, business, leave it alone. It's industrial, leave it that way. You've already allowed retail in. You started with the cannabis and it became medical. And then it became retail and now it can be full-blown retail because the camel's nose is under the tent and they're pushing all the rents. Because they want to have lounges, they can pay more than Houston and they can pay more than everybody, which knocks out all the typical service people and knocks out all this stuff. You've got maybe seven properties available in the whole city that are for sale and for rent. You've got an eight hundred foot building for sale on Bryant for six hundred thousand dollars. This is nuts. Even if you had somebody come into town, where are you gonna put them? Okay, so all the economic developments, all very nice, but that's not gonna help. Um, residential wise, I don't see where you're gonna put them. Um, don't forget the people who live in the fancy houses and the expensive ones who want to live here and stay here and live in condos, but there really is no place to put them. You've got Bryant for fifty units. You got the one next to where Chaparral is. You've got the one on Gridley. You've got some other stuff. Where are you gonna go? Up? You can't do more Whispering Oaks. You can't do the one like they have on the corner of, uh, Montgomery and Grand. That's one floor, I believe, isn't it? Or two floors? What's, what, those are easy. Those are country apartments. They're very nice. So if that's gonna be part of this, but how many people do we want to live in Ojai in twenty forty-five? In twenty thirty-five, you're talking three-point unit, three-point one per a bedroom, per house? Five hundred, so you've got five thousand bedrooms, uh, houses here now, four thousand and change? That's fifteen thousand people, more or less, if you do the math, right? Something like that. Where are you gonna put them? You got half the people in town, don't come into town anyway. They only come in on weekends. And you've got the million visitors now, the tourists, and then you got all the commuters. So I mean, this, this is nuts and bold stuff. This is, you know, paint the roads, do whatever you have to do. This is bricks and mortar. This is what the town's gonna look like in twenty twenty-five years. Thank you very much and this is important.
Thanks, Carolyn. Uh, okay, Carolyn, did you want to speak? Um, after Carolyn?
Oh, she's here. I thought she left. Hi, my name is Carolyn Goldwasser and I live in Ojai. And, um, I am interested in talking about safety mainly, safety from, uh, vehicles, safety from air quality from vehicles. Um, and safety in trying to cross streets or walk along streets or bicycle. I no longer bicycle, but many people still do. And I've noticed quite a lot of young people are bicycling on the sidewalks in the arcade, which makes it a little bit of an unsafe place for me to walk in the arcade with teenagers, you know, bicycling along on the sidewalks. That's a matter of safety. They probably shouldn't be there, I don't think. But, um, maybe they're, maybe they feel safer bicycling on the sidewalks than bicycling in the streets where there's a lot of traffic. So that's one, one issue that I have. I'm, I don't have a car. I haven't had a car in many, many years, but I have bicycled. Now I am a pedestrian and I ride the public transportation, which in this city is excellent. You have a trolley seven in the morning till seven at night, seven days a week. And a bus that goes down to the beach and the train, the Amtrak, excellent. This is a place you can live without the car. If you are a pretty good walker, which I am and which a lot of people could be. But it's, it's a, a one of the great benefits of Ojai is that you have a great transportation system already, which I think is a climate issue. It helps you with climate, uh, in the future. The more people that use the public transportation, the less people drive cars, it becomes better, in my opinion, for climate benefits. And the, the less people that drive cars means the more people that are walking and getting more exercise and being stronger and healthier. Now, I personally don't believe that I'm gonna be alive. Now, I personally don't believe that I'm going to be alive in 2045, although it's possible. My mom lived to be 99 years old, so it's possible. But I do think that we should get children to give their opinion. Teenagers, we're just reading poems at the library tonight where I was a little while ago, and get more of those groups of people putting their input into what they see, their life, they want to be in 20 years when they are 25 or 30 years old. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carolyn. Next, we have Brian Akins.
Hello there, Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. That might give you an idea why I'm up here. I'm, take it very personally to help preserve Ojai and the downtown historic district that we're, have been advocating and working for basically goes from Blanche, west-sided museum to Fox down at Ojai Roté. And so if you're looking at building houses, I love this. It says encourage building design that transitions from commercial character of downtown, that's called Mission Revival, to the primarily residential character of the VMU. Eleven porches on the front, but not sure they belong downtown. So anyway, that's my concern. I want to get a, would like to get a graphic that blows up to the plot plans. I think I know the plots on downtown Ojai better than anybody in Ojai after walking those and just to see what's planned for those areas. Again, you know, protecting our downtown is a key to us. It's kind of the heart of who we are. And if we do things that disrupt that, the beat slows. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Wes, any comments online?
Yes, Mayor. We have two raised hands. First, we'll have Renee, followed by Anita. Renee, you have the floor? Renee, are you there?
I see her.
Last chance, and we'll move on. Okay, moving on. Next, we'll have Anita.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
You can hear me. Okay, good. Okay. Well, thank you all for all your hard work in bringing this about. First thing I would like to say is the Ventura Affordable Housing Income Limit is too high. Ojai has, at least historically, has had a much lower average income than the county of Ventura. So I would like us to prioritize not affordable housing based on those statistics, but very low affordable housing, very low and low and extremely low because those are the ones that are falling through the cracks all the time, even if, so I won't say anything more about that. Second, would like to have a micro home, a trailer, tiny home, whatever you want to call it, for homeless and for the very low, extremely low people who are being overlooked and who are being displaced. Would like to have more community building in our town. So more support for the recreation department, for the children who do not have access to the recreation services, expand that, and also have support for community building amongst ourselves. Unfortunately, I don't want to be a doomsayer, but there could be some very serious future developments, both climate-wise and in terms of our economy. And we need to band together and develop community. We also need to diversify our economy. We can't depend so much on tourist monies to support our city. So we need to find a way to diversify our economy and put residents first. Business should be second. I'm sorry to say some people won't like that, but I believe residents should come first. In terms of updating the general plan, it's not just to get diversity, it's to make, just because for Rachel's, somebody mentioned that the purpose was diversity, but it's also, which had been stated earlier, I want this included, was to make the general plan current, with current concerns and interest. Let's see. Yeah, we have a million visitors. They are using our infrastructure. They're using our roads, our water, our sewage systems. And we also have residents who use all of those things too. So maybe we should have those, the tourism, support more of those services and increase. I know people won't like this as well, but increase the taxes on the tour, the bed tax. Thank you very much, and thank you for all your work.
Thank you, Anita.
Next, we have Teal Rowe, followed by Renee. Teal, you have the floor?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I appreciate all of the hard work that tonight represents. I really appreciate that from everybody. And I do realize that there have been envisioning workshops and such. I would like to add a comment tonight that we're in envisioning from the, from the future on to also look at the historical vision because especially for Bryant Street and the industrial section, which I believe is really, really important to a community for mental health and the ability to express and build and make noise without worrying about it. And also historically seen that on Pearl Street, that used to be industry and now it's whatever it is. And Lower Fulton used to be industry and now it's whatever it is. So historically, things are sort of going away and turning into housing. Also, historically, I remember when Bryant Street was being built, I think it was a wall that needed to be built in order to block off the industry from the housing. So I think the separation from manufacturer and housing is really, really, really important. And I know we need places to live. I understand that. I also think that creative expression and an environment to do so is very important. And then tonight, also in these meetings, I noticed that there sort of becomes an assumption that, you know, I'm hearing, yeah, there's going to be 150 units. And it's just assuming and because it's needed and, and all of that. And it just sort of glides over some of the really deep, deep soul reasons that Ojai even exists. So thank you for listening to me tonight, and thank you for all of your hard work. I do, do appreciate it and notice it. Thank you.
Thank you, Teal.
Next, we have Renee, followed by Sue. Renee, you have the floor? Renee, are you there?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I appreciate listening to all the comments from all the people who've spoken up as well as the robust discussion. I actually agree with some of the people who've spoken up earlier about the need for a focus on how we can make Ojai more livable for Ojai residents and affordable for Ojai residents. One of the things I'm hoping to see, and I don't know what you call it, but is there any way to have a infrastructure overlay bias toward bicycle paths and bicycle easements on any new projects that are developed from here on out? It's been lacking and it's been missing in our planning department for years and years and years. We could be doing so much more in our community on, for example, the Becker project. The north side of that property along the fence with the neighboring condos should all have been a bike path. There should have been a bike path that connects the east side of the town over to the west side of the, of the area without having to get on a main street. There's this infrastructure overlay is the only thing I know how to call it. But I think I, I get really excited. Today I was very excited because I was out for a walk and I saw young kids, five and six-year-old kids with their parents, and they're part of the Ojai Bicycle Club. And these long, young, very young kids were on bicycles with helmets and dirt bikes, and they were trying to learn how to do jumps and do really fun things. They could barely even sit on the seat of their bicycle. But it was so exciting to see that these kids were wanting to learn and parents were ready to teach them how to do it in a safe and responsible manner. The more we can start educating and promoting the use of infrastructure and the development of safe ways to use it is something that I think we've been missing for years and years and years. So I'd like to see that be added to any project that comes forth and have the developers have to pay or have that be part of their process for getting approval, that they have to exhaust all of those infrastructure needs. And that gives them credits for doing extra in that area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Renee.
Last raised hand we have is Sue. Sue, you have the floor? Sue, are you there? Last call.
Oh, hello?
We can hear you.
Oh, you can hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I want to thank you all. It's been really interesting to hear the discussion. I, I never got involved or heard about these visioning meetings. I think they were just maybe pre-pandemic, and since then, it seems to me things have drastically changed. Because of the pandemic, so many people have learned that they can, and have begun to work at home. And so this whole discussion about live work and the Bryant Street area, well, really all of Ojai, what, what kind of zoning and overlays are, are there concerning whether it's live work, residential or industrial or whatever? It seems like that whole framework has changed because so many more people are working from their home. And so it seems like that may need some clarification or redefinition about what is live work. So I'm conflicted about the Bryant Street area because I'm wondering if in terms of the possibility of having truly low-income housing, are there any other areas that have land that is cheap enough or, you know, doable for low-income housing? So I think these are considerations that should be thought about when you're deciding how to, you know, decide what goes where and what kind of zoning and regulations and things are for your, for the city. So I just wanted to make that point. And again, thank you very much. I'm really hope to be more involved and hear about the next community opportunity for the community to have input. Because I would love to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
That's all, Mayor.
Okay. All right. We will, we just finished the third section. So just a reminder to the group, we will discuss that and then we will have the vote or the roll call. Okay. First, we have Councilmember Rule and then Councilmember Francina.
Yes. So I have a couple of things to say. One is that the speaker who suggested, well, first of all, I've changed my mind about the workshops and, well, not changed my mind, but solidified the idea that I think we do need to do more outreach to the community and diversity. And I have some ideas. I've done focus groups with kids and young adults. So I can talk to Kiara and see if we can figure out a way to actually do that. So I have come to hear the community say that there is a need for that. And I think to the mayor's point or somebody's point, we're post-COVID and we need to rethink what's going on. And then I wanted to, I had this idea, I still don't know about Bryant Street. So, and I, and we can talk about Ojai Ave, but I had this idea about the climate. Perhaps as a compromise, we could have a statement around what our beliefs are and then interweave in all of the elements because I think it's really important that there be a direct link rather than, you know, something that's separated out because it is intertwined and should be intertwined in anything that we do. So potentially, we could do like an executive summary and then inter, interweave it. I'd like to hear from the, I'd like to hear from the other council members as to the Ojai corridor, knowing that we do have the two overlays with the school, the school property and the Becker. I think Becker owns the second one. We have the American Legion that is thinking about and, and planning for affordable housing for veterans. So, so the, it is going to become a housing corridor in one way or another, and zoning is taken out of our hands once you start doing affordable housing. And, you know, you have nonprofit developers coming in and doing that. And then the other question is, we have just approved the ATP. So, yeah, did we do that? Everyone's going to be like, I'm crazy. Okay. So I'm like, yeah, I think we did. So that is a stretch of bicycling that is going to go from one end of town to the other. So it will be accessible and with alternative transportation for just, you know, anyone who lives on that corridor. There now will be a, well, we hope, a safe biking area. So that, I think that's something to throw into the mix as well. And like I said, I look forward to hearing about what other people and other council members and our friends from the Planning Commission have to say about the Ojai Ave corridor.
Mayor Proton, Francina, and then Commissioner Starkweather.
Okay. So I'm going to talk about, a little bit about the housing overlay and then the vision for 2045. And I really want to express my appreciation for the comments from the public, especially Dr. Steve Colome. Loved what you said. Thank you. As far as the housing overlay goes, I would be in favor of option three because we already have house Whispering Oaks on Ojai Avenue, then all the way to the border where the Firestick Pottery is. There's housing, isolated, but it's there. Firestick Pottery, she, she lives there. So it's, it's already there and I'm in favor of extending, extending it, you know, to the border, you know, looking at that. I don't have any details, but just want to point out that it's already there and I'm in favor, and I'm, you know, places where we can have housing overlay like at the American Legion across from the smaller Westridge. So my, when I think of a vision for 2045, then it makes me like fearless to put out ideas that may, that the town may not be ready for now, but ideas I presented in 1994 are now mainstream. So I think we could get ideas into the general plan that will evolve over time and become accepted by society. And so I want to point out that the, the greatest negative impact on our small-town character is the vehicle traffic. You know, we have Level D on Ojai Avenue, every side street, Grand Avenue, all of this traffic is the, is the direct result of past policies that prior, prioritize the convenience of cars. We have to remember that it's not an accident. Traffic is not like the rain. It is completely under our control if we have a vision. Okay? So our, our vision could be, could include, I mean, there are things that we've talked about that I believe are acceptable, and then there are things that might still be considered radical. But for example, I think everyone agrees that every child should be able to ride their bike safely to school. So that would be the safe routes to school. We could have car-free affordable housing. Other communities have done it. So that instead of taking up parking, you know, the space, more, more asphalt and all that, you could have car sharing. There can be programs if the affordable housing is, you know, 10, 15-minute walking distance to town. Tourists can park on the outskirts of town. That's completely doable. You can do a citywide 20 is plenty or 25 save lives. A a citywide 20 is plenty or 25 save lives so that nobody's confused about the speed. You could also do uh the ATP is, you know, right now, we're we have, we're planning for Shero's on Ojai Avenue. But we are never, ever going to keep people from riding on sidewalks until we remove the parking and we have bike lanes, real bike lanes. Up and down Ojai Avenue. And that can all, it's all doable if we have the vision and the willpower to do it. Um. I think that's that's just about the gist of it. Nothing I'm saying here is hasn't been done in other cities, you know, where. Where the city has policies and that's right in line with climate. Where the where we do not continue to make automobile infrastructure the top priority. But we really get serious. Summer Street, major connecting street, a lot of, you know, lower income, there's apartments. Not a single sidewalk. It's 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 in, what's the word? It's inexcusable. I've discussed, you know, it's been talked about for years and years. We had a uh nine nineteen ninety nineteen ninety eight, we adopted Ojai's first bicycle pedestrian master plan. Oh, I I believe that we're ready for that because if we're serious about maintaining our small town. Character, we have to get serious about managing the traffic and put forth these ideas. Get the chamber. I think Jamie's already on board, actually, and and he and Rachel, thank you. You've been watching all the people with one. Usually one person per car. You you see it everywhere. All of that we can change. And it can even be a unit in the, you know, climate should be a unit in the schools. And the kids should get PE credit for riding their bikes. All of that is doable and in line if we want to make climate a priority. Traffic is like the biggest is the biggest impact. That's where the oil and the gas and then of and of course, it's all connected to housing. Commuting and all of that. But the tourists, the millions of tourists are not the problem. It's the millions of cars. That's it. I'm done.
Uh, Commissioner Starkweather.
Thank you. Uh, uh, looking at these options, three seems to be the best, but uh it's hard to tell because I can't actually see the lots.
I can see it. I I know that area.
Well, I sort of know it, but you know, but my biggest concern is the single family units. Um, and it seems like we have plenty of single family units in this town. Eighty percent of our home are single family. So if we're looking at those, I would like to know what kind of lot size we're talking about. How many units per acre? How many square? We shouldn't be building anything that's over 1,200 square feet. Cause people don't want, cause people always say if you build new. Single family houses, it's going to be raise the 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 price of housing. Well, the the and people are going to come in with money and want to buy these houses. Well, if you make them small, you're not going to get that type of person. So and also. The more concentrated, the more attached, the more multifamily. The less water we're going to use, the less, the more sustainable it's going to be. It's going to be better for the climate. And it's going to be less traffic because all the the vehicle miles traveled statistics show. That the more it's single family, the larger the size of the house, the more traffic per household. And multifamily and particularly affordable housing has the least amount of traffic. So I don't know that we're even looking at those kinds of details. I agree with almost everybody that talked about we need more diversity of input. Um, and I like the fact that Wesley picked up on my idea of of focus groups because that's really the way you can actually. Get people to have discussions and get details and break them down into diff- different demographic groups. Um, and the other thing that I think. It's hard for most people to just look at a map and envision what it's going to look like. So sometimes having some renderings of what we're talking about would give people a better idea. Of what the alternatives are, and I I've seen that done before. And the final thing is on the climate. I'm totally in support of having a climate element. I have a lot at the county level to get one. We didn't quite get it, but we at least got a climate action plan. And they they integrated it. But it seems like that is a um something that the city council would have to make a decision because you need a greenhouse gas inventory first. And then it's it's a very technical thing developing a climate action plan. And we need a consultants that are experts on that. Uh, I don't think you can just. We can just decide what our. Plans are going to be for climate action without doing that type of analysis. So you're targeting what are your larger. Uh, sources of greenhouse gas.
Any other comments from Commissioner Andy?
Yeah. Um. So I'm wondering if tourism is an appropriate topic for the general plan in addressing. Tourism, cohabitating with a million tourists a year.
I think um. It wasn't part of the focus of tonight's meeting, so I guess it it. It's something that we can talk about as part of the general plan update. I think that maybe the question is how far do we want to get into this tonight at this point?
No, I don't want to um open up a discussion on that tonight. I just want to find out that if I. Made a motion to append to what we're already voting on uh. Adding a section on uh. Addressing tourism based upon the input that we get on. Um, planning that we can do to make uh. Achieve the uh some form of harmony between. Our new tourism life. I mean, I think somebody tonight said that people only go downtown. On weekends and everybody I know. Will not go downtown on weekends for any circumstances. So we may have people uh on. Never never going downtown.
Can I just, yeah, I I live downtown and people actually walk. You know, they walk, they walk the streets, they go downtown, their friends come, families go. They may not come from the from, you know, far away, but but there's a lot of activity in the downtown i- in my neighborhood of people heading downtown to go.
And also you can park in lots of places a couple of blocks away because I go downtown all the time.
I'm just saying what people tell me.
Yeah, no, I know. I I know. I I think it depends where you live.
Do you want to add?
Uh, yeah, I I'd like to add to Rachel's motion that we uh that we address. Tourism and a and adapting to tourism uh. Harmonizing with the residents. Um. As part of the general plan.
Right.
So I.
Could you do that? Yeah. That'll make sense. You might as well add.
Could I ask Councilmember, all of us, uh, no crosstalk. Let's allow Councilmember Whitman to finish.
Okay, so. What I've heard is that we had. Something like 300 people show up for a visioning session in. Two thousand twenty. Um, who then put small town character. As their top priority. And then. I attended this uh workshop that included. The housing overlay uh. Topic we're talking about right now for the downtown quarter and I don't know that there were as many people as there are here tonight for that workshop. I don't think there were. And so I think that those people who put small town character as their highest priority are going to be. Very upset if we are. Not allowing them to come back and speak to us again or get. Rally their friends if they hear that part of what we're considering. Is. Two story residential construction along the Ojai Corridor. Um, so I don't, I think we need to have community feedback on that issue. Um. And. Uh. Those are my comments at this point.
Um, uh, Commissioner Trent.
Um, yeah, I just had a a couple of points as as we talk about visioning and wherever we want to go in two thousand forty five. Um, I think we need to kind of take a step back and and look at the broader picture as well. I mean, we live in the state of California. It's a very popular state. Um, just to throw out some numbers, in nineteen eighty, we had 24 million people that lived in California. Two thousand twenty, we have 39 million people live in California. So in that time span, we had in nineteen eighty, we had nine million homes. Two thousand twenty, we had 14 million homes. So we didn't keep up with the pace of building homes to handle the population growth that California had. Now, the Department of Finance in California says that in two thousand fifty, we should have about 50 million people living in California. So that demand is always going to be on Ojai. We're always going to have people that want to live next to the coast, next to the ocean. So. Mountains, we're only 15 minutes away from the beach. You're always going to have people that want to live here. So. We have to figure out, okay, well, how much housing are we comfortable with? When do we come to a point where we look at our valley and we say? Maybe we can't handle that much. Maybe we're at capacity. According to Ventura County, we're at capacity. Our resources are tapped. So we have to kind of consider that too. We got to look at the Ventura County picture. We're a microcosm. We're four square miles within this bigger valley, a valley that's like 20,000 people. You know, we're like 7,000. So we're small. We got a big bigger valley and inside that we got a bigger. Um, uh, county, which is about a million people. We've got a big county. And Ojai is a desirable place to live. So we got to understand that demand is always going to be there. And there's a good, um. I don't know if you guys heard Shane Phillips, the U S UCLA guy talk.
Yeah.
Well, he made a, he made a good point. He said. You can't have an appealing, unchanging and affordable town. You can have two, but you can't have three.
Wait.
We've chosen in Ojai since nineteen eighty or prior to. That we wanted to have appealing and we wanted to have unchanging. So that leaves affordability out of the question. Anyway, just one.
Just to pick up on your point, Commissioner Trent, um, unchanging, keep it, it's really important for all of us to keep in mind that. We live in the fastest heating county in the continental US. We've gone up 4.7 degrees Fahrenheit. We're experiencing climate driven aridification, which is. Permanent change in our climate. So that's really got to be taken into consideration. The other thing to pick up on your point is. We live in a floodplain and a high fire zone with two exits. And on a Saturday evening, when there are 2,500 tourists in town, you know, we've got to be able to get everybody out quickly.
Yeah, in two thousand seventeen, when we had our Thomas Fire. There was a period where all the roads are closed.
Right. Um, and just, uh, I'll get to you in just a second, um, Councilmember Rule, but um, I think it's important. It's 10 o'clock. Um, we should start wrapping it up. Um, and I I just want to express gratitude to um all the speakers who came online and here. Uh, we really appreciate your input and thank you to all the commissioners. Council members. Um, it's just super important to hear um. All these viewpoints and it definitely seems, I mean, generally that we need more public input from more voices. So, um, Councilmember Rule?
Yeah, I'm not sure if if I mentioned it, but I I think that the woman who spoke about having a skeleton sort of um envisioning. Something to work from, in other words, so not just, you know, open it up. But but maybe start with what we have and have people modify that and, you know, either toss it out or make it better. Or something like that. So we're not starting from ground zero again. I mean, we've done some of the work. So it might be good to try to leverage some of the work that we've done and have a starting point. And the other thing um is to Commissioner Trent's point. We also have to know, look at reality. The state of California, I think in 2023, has. Close to 300 housing bills coming out. And if we believe. And it's possible that we're not going to be privy to to those regulations. We're not looking at reality and I think. It's not going to, it's not going to serve us well. Um, you know. Because we have not built and and Ojai is almost writ large of of what. The state of California thinks about housing and they're making huge changes. And I I would hope that we will at least consider that. I have. Two hundred laws coming out in 2020. Well, I don't know that they're going to get passed, but you know, they're up there. It's reality. We cannot shut the gates. It just, you know. It's not possible. So just going to keep that in mind. They want, they, the state of California wants. Us to build affordable housing. And if we don't do it. They will make sure that we do it. I have no doubt about that. Um, so, you know, there you go. I just have to say that because I think it's the reality of it all.
Uh, Councilmember Lang.
Thank you. Um, to to that point, um, so I I totally, I mean, I agree with you. We we're seeing the evidence. That the state is trying to have more control over the cities. And so for that reason, I think wherever we can. Maintain our control. Um. Knowing that this is a trend, knowing that this is something that hap- that is going to happen. I think we need to be really mindful. We're making land use decisions. The other thing too, I want to speak to um Commissioner Trent's point is that there's. There's new information coming out of about population. And there was a study that was recently done about the California Exodus during COVID. That the population declined by more than 500,000 individuals. And arguably, it's because of the cost of living, because people can live. They don't have to, you know, they can work virtually. They don't have to live in high highly concentrated areas like Silicon Valley. Um, but that's part of a bigger trend and and the Pew Research Center came out with a study. That by 2100, that that population have a across the the world, but especially in Europe and in America. The population's been steadily uh climbing, but for the first time since nineteen fifty. Populations are expected to decline um and 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 plateau and continue to decline by 2100. So I think that, yes, there's a need for housing, but I.
That world, that's world population you're talking about?
I know, that's that's just, no, because they're they're growing in India and in parts of Africa, but and and in China.
Decreasing.
Yes, but they're decreasing in Europe and Latin America and America and the US.
But we're, we're one of the few that aren't actually decreasing. We've got a millennial generation and also Gen Z that's pretty large.
This is, this is, this is including that.
Okay, I'd like to see that one.
Yeah, it's the Pew Research Center. You can, you can look it up. This was a a study that they did.
Um, I'm going to suggest we wrap it up uh with uh Commissioner Starkweather and then go to the vote.
I'm just going to make one point in that, but that's not what I wanted to talk about.
But it'll just take me a second. Actually, the the number of people that are living single households is increasing. And the fact that you have less kids per household doesn't mean you have less households. So actually, because more and more people are living solely, so, you know, living by themselves. You either need more multifamily or apartments so that there's more places for those people to live. They don't need. You know, 2,000 square foot houses. Um. I I want to go back to a bugaboo, which, because we're debating, in a sense, our opportunities and our threats. We seem to have disagreement about that. And that's what bothers me about, we never got the actual SWOT analysis with the list of the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats from the professional consultants. So we could decide whether we agree with those and we all could be going forward. Together with an agreement as to where. You know, where we are and where we need to go because we're not, we don't have that. So anyway, that's the point I'd like to make.
And of course, we can have that in the workshop, so we can.
Well, I'm just asking the consultants ought to be doing it because that's what they were asked to do.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Whitman?
Yeah, so um. Somebody listed earlier the the um. Priorities from the 2020 Visioning Workshop, and I would like to see. Um, how those. How those priorities are going to be worked into the general plan. And that that was part of my asking the question earlier, whether the current general plan. Which actually has a lot of those concepts in it is going to be. You know, repeated and perpetuated or. Uh, are we starting from scratch? And if we are, then I would like to see us focus more on those things that uh. Are. our residents have talked about their, you know, general concepts for, uh, guiding principles for our community.
You, you're talking about open space, small-time character, historical character, environmental sustainability?
Small-town character, yes.
Okay.
Sustainability.
Well, let's, let's, uh, go back to the motion. What did he say? Um, would you like to repeat that, please, Mr. City Attorney?
Happy to, Madam Mayor. The motion on the table is to take no further action tonight on the land use policy questions on the table to direct staff to come back with another public workshop to be held on a Saturday. The goal of increasing the diversity of the participants. And then to return with options and prices for a climate action plan or climate action element. And I heard a fourth component that I would ask, which was, uh, from Councilmember Whitman to confirm, Councilmember Lang would add, which is to add a section uh, or an element, I'm not sure about the details, addressing tourism to better achieve harmony between residents and tourists. And the question would be, does Councilmember Lang accept that as an amendment? And if so, Councilmember Whitman is a seconder. So that would then get baked into the motion.
I accept that.
Okay. All right. Uh, could we get the roll call, please, Weston?
Yes, Mayor.
Questions. Um, we were going to break up the, or we were going to vote on breaking up the issues. Also, I wanted to find out if, um, Councilmember Lang would accept, um, I, I really think it's important to have the climate component interwoven into all of the elements so that you see the context in which we're talking about it. I'm, I'm less, uh, I'm, I'm less, I don't care about whether or not it sits as its own entity as well. But I really would like to see it in context of the other elements. So if in some way we could friendly, with, with friendship amend your motion, um, I, I think it's important.
Yeah, I, so I, I think I, I really want it as a standalone, uh, its own standalone because we can include so many, because I think it's important for us to have like a comprehensive climate action plan or a, a climate plan as a part of this. I, I totally, I agree with you that climate needs to be a part of everything in the general plan, but I, I don't, I don't, um, I don't see the, that, um, replacing the need for something that is standalone.
Yeah, and I, I'm perfectly fine with it not being an either or, but that we have the climate plan standalone, but also ask if staff can put it in context and try to weave it into the other elements. If it's possible to do, I just, you know, I, I would like that as well. Um, standalone is absolutely fine with me.
And, uh, Councilmember Lang, you're okay with, uh, voting on each one separately, correct, for your motion?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Uh, can we have the first item, Matt?
The first item would be to take no further action tonight on the policy questions on the table.
Okay, roll call, please, Weston.
What, what does that mean? That everything we did, what, what did we do tonight that would, what? How does that motion impact what we have accomplished tonight?
So the previous decisions already made would stand. So direction to staff to return with the necessary documents to, uh, shift Montgomery north of Aliso to VMU would stand. That, that was done. And direction to staff to return with the documents to shift the residences on the east side of Fulton from, uh, CM to manufacturing to VMU would stand. The other questions posed by the consultants about the Ojai Avenue overlay zone and housing and about the rest of Bryant with no, no direction given, deferred to the future. That's, that's this part of the motion.
So, so we, we didn't provide any direction?
Correct.
And we will.
That would be the motion. If you want to provide direction, absolutely. That's a policy choice. Vote no on the motion and make a different motion.
I just want to make sure, you know, it's been a long night. I just want to make sure that everything we grappled with discussed, that that motion doesn't mean staff ignores it or anything like that.
I don't think they're going to.
No.
We understand everything is on the table, but to be very clear, we will not do anything to move those things forward if that motion passes. Unless and until the council provides that direction at a future workshop or a future meeting.
And of course, we're.
But that doesn't mean that the staff, so the staff is actually, has heard, our consultants have actually heard what we've discussed in terms of our, you know, thoughts and visions and what we want guidance on. And that'll be incorporated into what we come back with, correct?
Yeah, it'll be incorporated into the workshop discussions for sure.
So why do we need that motion?
The, maybe let me phrase it another way. Two states of the world. Choice number one, the motion as, as it stands, is that we come back, we, there's no direction to staff to write up any of the changes to Ojai Avenue, nor to the rest of Bryant. And it would come back at the next, assuming the workshop motion passes, which I think it will, it'll come back at a workshop to get more public input and then return to council at a future date. When it comes back to council, it'll be the options, the questions, the, the points that are raised tonight will be further analyzed by staff, but there will be no draft documents. Option two, other state of the world, vote down that motion and instead secure approval from the majority for a motion to direct staff to draft documents to shift Ojai Avenue to allow housing under one of the other options and/or to shift Bryant Street to allow changes. So two states of the world.
Yeah. So, so it's like a pause?
It's a deferral to the next workshop if the workshop motion also passes.
Okay, okay. Uh, roll call, please, Weston.
Roll call. Mayor Pro Tim Francina.
I have a quick question. Um, are we also doing an envisioning workshop? How many workshops are we doing?
Okay. And then we're going to cover everything in that workshop. That is the motion. Okay, okay.
Roll call. We don't cover it and then we have to come back for a second session.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking. Okay. All right. Roll call, please, Weston.
Mayor Pro Tim Francina.
Okay, yes.
Mayor Sticks.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Councilmember Lang.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes. Okay. All right. The second item, Matt, please.
Second motion is to have another public workshop on all of the above.
Okay, uh, roll.
Which would be on a Saturday with the direction to, uh, focus on diversity in, uh, participants.
Okay, uh, roll call, please, Weston.
Yes. Mayor Sticks.
Yes.
Councilmember Lang.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Sure, yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Francina.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Uh, next item, Matt, please.
Can, 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 when you, uh, I can, I'll ask at the end. I'll ask a question about the Saturday. Yeah.
I'll wait. Okay, go ahead, Matt.
Third motion is to, for staff to return with options and prices for a climate, a climate change resiliency element and/or a climate action plan.
Okay, uh, thank you. Roll call, please, Weston.
Wait, why and/or? Why not both?
And/or would cover both. And/or is a climate action plan, a climate change resilience element, or both.
To give us options, is that correct?
Options and prices.
Okay, options and prices.
But we also agreed that we would work to interweave the climate action plan thingy into the other elements so that it would have context. Is that part of this motion or is that just?
Well, I think Councilmember Lang, did you want to?
Yeah, so, so Councilmember Rule, um, one thing I'm, I'm, I'm wondering is if that would be redundant? If we have a separate standalone piece, um, if, if that would, if, if that would suffice just having one op- one, uh, climate action plan?
You, you feel like it would be properly put in context and, and it wouldn't need to find its form in the individual session, sections?
Yes, and, and an example, I'm, and, and example of that, that, um, that we're, that was, that is, tonight's an example of that. Because as we've been talking about each one of these pieces of the land use, we've mentioned things like environmental justice or like, we've, we've tied in a lot of, I mean, I think we're all of a like mind in this one area. Like this is something we can, we can agree on. Um, and, and so my sense is that if we have an, a climate action plan, then we could refer back to it when making any decisions and say, does this match with that?
Okay, so, so.
As we agree to climate plan.
Uh huh, right.
Content, we can instruct our consultants that I, I want you to weave that into this aspect of the plan.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, and, and we, we approved a climate action plan like three sessions ago, didn't we?
We approved to put it on the agenda, but we.
Put it as a goal.
Yes, we never, so this would actually be taken instead forward.
Okay, so this, so this would be, this would actually prioritize that and, and, and we'd go ahead and pass it.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, then. All right, Weston, roll call, please.
On the third motion, Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Francina.
Yes.
Councilmember Lang.
Yes.
Mayor Sticks.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule.
Okay, and the final.
Final motion would be to direct staff and the consultants to prepare an element or sections addressing the, uh, policy of achieving a better harmony between residents and tourists.
Thank you. Uh, roll call, please, Weston.
Wait a minute. That's kind of vague. What? What? Say what? Better harmony among residents and tourists?
Right, it'd be, uh, as I understand the motion, it's to direct staff to come up with or, or bring back, um, policies that could be adopted to accomplish those goals, all in one place rather than spread throughout the general plan as they are now, fulfilling the initial visioning statement regarding creating, maintaining the city's small-town character.
But tourism element.
Sort of a tourism management element.
It's a Councilmember Whitman's, um, motion. So do you want to say anything or no?
No.
Okay, let's just vote. Go ahead, Weston.
We didn't really talk about that, did we? I mean, I, I'm thinking that that's something that's, uh, I mean, I agree.
We can bring it back to the next.
I, I agree that we, that we need it, but I don't know that it's part of this particular, um.
Well, that, that's why I asked if it was, and I was advised that it could be an appropriate part of the.
Yeah, well, you know.
And we're not.
It's always, anything can be anything.
Okay, so we're not.
Okay, all right.
We're not adopting a, my motion is not that we're adopting a tourism element, but that they bring us what would be in the, you know, be in that in terms of a plan to, uh, allow our residents to, to get some relief from the tourism.
That's really.
Well, you, you can, you can vote. I mean, we can vote. All right, whichever way we want. Go ahead.
Roll call. Mayor Pro Tim Francina?
No.
Mayor Sticks.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Councilmember Lang.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule.
No. Okay, all right. Thank you. That's it. Correct, Matt?
The traffic plan.
All right, um, any final comments before we adjourn tonight? I just want to thank everyone for being, um, attentive and productive and civil. And, um, thank you for all your great ideas. We are adjourned.
Hi, everyone. Thank you.